I call this meeting North Adams City Council order for June 26. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Bona.
Here.
Buddington.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Harpen.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
LaForest.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Moran.
Wilkinson.
Here.
Please stand for a moment of silence. We'll be remembering Alphonse Torquilla, who served the city of North Adams as an engineer, and also Michael Shalafu, who regularly attended these meetings and advocate of the city for supporting the vets, and you would see him around cleaning up the trash around the city. Thank you. And the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need the approval of the minutes from June 12?
Motion to accept the minutes from June 12.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Minutes approved. We're going to be shifting a couple of the agenda items around since we have some people in attendance here that can hopefully leave earlier. First, we will start out with paper number 11,681. This is a communication submitted by Counselor Cohen regarding the Wreaths Across America program. Without objection, we will file the communication and hear from Counselor Cohen.
Sure. Letter to the North Adams City Council, June 18. Since 2008, Congress has chosen one Saturday each December to honor our men and women that served in our armed forces. As a result, municipalities all across the United States have honored the past veterans of their cities and towns by participating in the Wreaths Across America annual wreath laying ceremonies. This year, we are fortunate to have these efforts co-chair for our North Adams cemeteries. On behalf of the Wreaths Across America Committee for North Adams Cemeteries, I respectfully request that the city council allow Chris Maloney to speak regarding their plans moving forward to honor over 2,500 veterans from our city.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Chris Maloney, 447 Walnut Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for allowing us a few minutes of your time. We are here to request your support, gain exposure, and raise awareness for the Wreaths Across America program that we're bringing to the city of North Adams. Through the Wreaths Across America program, we are ensuring that the lives of our men and women in uniform are remembered, not their deaths. It is our responsibility as Americans to be their witness and to share their stories of service and sacrifice with the next generation. As the location and fundraising coordinators for Wreaths Across America, North Adams Cemeteries, our mission is to place a remembrance wreath on each of the veterans' gravestone. In order to accomplish this, we plan to raise monies through individual wreath sponsorship, fundraising activities, corporate donations, and grant monies from various community organizations. It's estimated that there are approximately 2,500 veterans buried in the Southview, Hillside, St. Joseph's, and Blackington cemeteries. We expect the cost for our wreaths to be approximately $25,000. From now until November, we will need volunteers willing to take part in various fundraisers to sponsor the 2,500 wreaths needed to honor every veteran in all four cemeteries in North Adams. Each wreath sponsorship costs $15. For every two wreath sponsorships sold, three wreaths will be provided to North Adams Cemeteries as part of a special fundraising program developed by Wreaths Across America. The National Wreaths Across America Day is a free event, open to all, and we have more information that's available at our website to donate or volunteer. We believe this to be a benefit to our community, to remember and honor our veterans, and to give people of all ages the opportunity to be involved with the preparation leading up to Wreath Day. We are here to request your support and use of the Veterans Memorial site on the day of the wreath laying ceremony, get support and fire from, wait, support from fire and police if needed, and the use of the city yard for wreath delivery two days prior to the event, as well as help with disposal of the wreaths in January when we have to remove them. And we're also looking for any suggestions the council may have to make this a successful event. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Since this is a communication, I guess are there any questions at this point, or no? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We will move on. The next paper, without objection, I'd like to move up, is paper number 11,682. This is a communication submitted by Counselor Harpen requesting consideration of a stipend for the retirement board members.
Okay.
Oh, yes, Counselor Harpen? Go ahead.
Thank you for bringing this a little bit forward in the agenda. So I also had a communication to my fellow counselors in the past week, and it reads, Dear fellow counselors, the retirement board took up discussion in August 2017 requesting the city council's consideration to authorize a stipend for the retirement board members. I am bringing to council this evening on a request from the administrator on June 13, 2018, and this was the letter that she had sent me and I gave to my fellow counselors. Please note the following significant facts. This is a five-member board that acts as judiciaries for a $65 million fund. Two members are elected by the membership of the system, two are appointed by the mayor, and one member is appointed by the other four members. Each board member is responsible to file a personal yearly financial report. Each board member is required to fill 18 credits of education within a three-year term. This is an autonomous board that is not run by the city, and stipends will not affect any city budget. In Western Massachusetts, 14 of the 16 retirement systems pay their board members a stipend. Massachusetts general law states a stipend shall not be less than $3,000 per year and not more than $4,500 per year. I request the council president allow the retirement system administrator to speak and answer questions of fellow counselors if they have questions, along with public comments.
At this time, if there's a member of the retirement board who wishes to speak on this, you know, and then we'll see how much discussion goes on tonight, or if it's something that may end up getting referred to committee. Because I did move this ahead in the agenda, so I'd rather it not take up a bulk of our night since, you know, it probably should get referred, but, so I don't know who your representative is, who you wish to speak from the retirement board? Yes. Name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Beth Matson, and I'm the administrator for the board.
Excuse me, can you adjust the mic, too? And it's not for us, it's for the people at home, so just make sure you're speaking to the mic clearly.
Is that better?
I don't know, I'm not home. But I'm sure they're appreciating it. Thank you.
Great. Beth Matson, 211 Overhogel Road in Stamford. I'm the administrator for the retirement board. I'm the one who sent the request, and I have a brief statement that I'd like to make. And I hope you all had a chance to review the package that I had sent over. There's just a couple of things I want to highlight for you. The length of the service, the length of the board member's service is close to 88 years. They've been volunteering, if you combined it all together, four of them have been volunteering for over 20 years each. Last year, our system earned 20.83% in investment income, which amounted to over $10 million. That ranked us second in the state when compared to the 104 systems in Massachusetts. And I think those numbers speak to the value of experience held on this board. In 2012, we underwent a pension reform throughout the state, and it affected many areas of retirement. But the one that affected our board members the most significantly was the education requirement. Board members must complete 18 educational credits per term. Now, our board members get these credits at two conferences a year. Each conference is three days, and one in the spring and one in the fall, and that's for a combined total of six days they spend. The majority of my members attend both conferences, which leads to three of our board members are self-employed, so when they attend these conferences, they're losing money they would otherwise be earning. It's my belief that it shouldn't cost money to serve on a volunteer board. And I just also wanted to reiterate that the board is a legal, separate, and distinct entity from the city, and any funds spent on a stipend would come from the retirement system. And I'll be happy to answer questions if you have any.
I'll start with Counselor Wilkinson and Counselor Lamb.
Just curious, has your executive committee voted to grant the stipend?
My executive, you mean the retirement board?
Yes.
We have found through the Ethics Commission that they, it's not appropriate for them to vote their own.
Okay, then we have to have somebody approve the stipend. Have you polled your membership at this point to find out if a stipend is something that they would be interested in?
We have not. The statute says that it is the legislative body of the...
Well, your executive board can't vote on it because it's a conflict of interest. But you haven't had your membership vote on it. I mean, to me, seems like a classic case of the cart before the horse. To be quite honest with you, there's nobody in your organization that's agreeable to go ahead with a stipend. I'll be quite honest with you, I have no problem with it. It's not costing the city any money. They do a lot of really hard, good work, and probably deserve it. But again, I don't think your ducks are in a row, and we could send it to committee, but it would go nowhere. I think you should withdraw without prejudice until you have your membership behind you.
Okay. Okay, that's certainly something that we could do. I just wanted to state...
I mean, sending it to committee now goes nowhere.
Eighty percent of the boards in the state got through the process this way, not the other way.
Your membership hasn't agreed to do this.
Correct.
I really think your membership needs to agree to do this if you're going to move forward.
Okay.
But that's just my personal opinion.
Very good. Thank you.
Counselor Lamb, Counselor Cohen, and then Counselor Buddington.
So similar concern I was going to raise, basically, just curious if there had been a polling of the membership in particular, because I feel like, and I was wondering if all those other ones that, the 80% that you just mentioned, if they all did go exactly through this sort of a process, or if they did a polling of their membership?
They all went this way.
Okay, yeah, I mean, and I have, similarly, I have no problem with it from the city end of things, because it is a separate entity, and it is fully funded through the operations of that. I was actually quite impressed by the numbers in terms of even the 33-year, you know, ranking as we are in the state. We're doing extremely well compared to many of our peers throughout the state, so kudos to the board in that respect. And I think, you know, with the credit piece, with the other components, I absolutely don't see an issue from our perspective. But I may, if I was a member of the retirement community and I saw this happening without any input, I may have concerns. And so that's just something that did sort of come to mind in terms of...
That's fair.
...an option to inquire on a little bit.
Counselor Cohen and Counselor Buddington.
On that same note, if we do send it to committee, and this is kind of to the chair, could we give them the extension of the time to do a poll and then go to committee, or do they have to come back and request that?
This can be postponed, but, you know, that's going to put a lot in their end, so it may be a case of withdrawing, and then they poll their members and can come back with their request, or we can postpone it for, you know, when they think they may be able to come back.
So, quick question, the 14 of the 16 retirement systems that pay their board were one of the two that do not?
Correct.
And who is the other one?
Monique.
Monique.
Also note that that's Western Mass, not, she said there was 104 in the system, so...
You know, I do think that it probably does need a little bit of work. As the other counselor said, I do support this, but, you know, we just want to make sure that all the members are on board with it.
Okay. Very fair.
Counselor Buddington.
My understanding is that the city of North Adams pays into this fund to the degree necessary to prepare for our pension obligations. Is that correct?
Correct. We're 75% there, yeah.
Great. But it does seem to me that if the retirement board adopts, or if we allow or get a stipend, that will come out of the operations of the retirement board, but then the city will have to make that up. I mean, that will be reflected in how much needs to be contributed to the board. So even though the city is not contributing this money directly, it does seem that we will certainly be contributing this much, which by my math was, what, $15,000 to $22,500 indirectly, because we'll have to...
Indirectly, sure, but it also depends a lot on the investment earnings. And last year, we made the $10 million. We average about, our goal is to hit seven and a quarter. We did 20.83, and when you're talking $15,000 compared to $65 million, it's negligible.
I agree with that. But I also wanted to point out that that also means that the impact of this stipend is really on us, on the city. I don't see that it would have much effect for the people who are collecting pensions in the city, because the obligations to them are not affected by this.
Right.
And so I don't see that a polling, I'm not sure if Counselor Wilkinson was referring to the membership of the committee or the membership of the, you know, the people receiving pensions.
Members receiving pensions.
Okay.
The full membership.
Okay.
I just don't, I don't feel as though a polling of those members, I don't feel as though they're in a position to have a great stake in it or have particular information as to the effect of a stipend or not.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to mention two things. I agree with Counselor Buddington as well. Two of the members are actually elected by the retirement people that are members. So those two people represent those members of the retirement system. So, you know, if it's coming forward, and, you know, I would think that they would be for this, because they're bringing it forward into the council. And my other comment is, you know, this is a big commitment for a volunteer board. I know we have a lot of boards here, but these guys actually have a responsibility to some education on a regular basis, and also responsibility for their personal financial statements, which, you know, we don't even do as counselors. So I think that's a, for me, that's a risk, you know, so, you know, that is important as well. So I just want to remind you that two of them are appointed by the membership, so, you know, the membership is putting their faith in those two members.
Yes, Counselor LaForest. Couple of questions. I'm wondering how often the board meets and for what amount of time, and what the sort of rough time commitment, you know, is expected, you know, anticipated for each board member on a monthly basis? And my other question is, are the board members themselves micromanaging, as it were, the investments? Or do you have a, you know, a trading house or financial planner that works with you to select, you know, your investments?
Sure. So to the first...
To the mic, please.
The first question? We meet monthly.
Okay.
I'm in contact with at least two to three of the board members several times a week. There's the two conferences, which, again, are six days. They meet also as needed on an emergency base. They get called in for that as well. And the second part of the question was, I'm sorry...
Who manages the investments?
Okay, so we're responsible for doing RFPs and going out and finding and rating and interviewing our investment managers. In fact, we're due this year, and we anticipate about 30 applications, which is going to be very time-consuming.
Okay.
I don't have an amount of time for that, but I know I wasn't here the last time, but it's going to be long.
May I continue?
Sure.
Okay, so again, this is just for information. I'm not trying to, you know, harass you, but, okay, so you were, you're the full-time administrator...
Correct.
...of the board, or of the pension fund?
System, yeah.
System, thank you. Okay, and so do you send out the RFPs, or do the individual members of the board send out the RFPs?
Okay, so I'm going to send out the RFPs. I'm going to post it in Pension Investments and all the proper places I'm supposed to. Then when we receive them, they're going to be sealed. And when the deadline is due, they have to be opened all at once at a board meeting to be reviewed. Does that answer it?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, so I guess to Counselor Wilkinson's point, I just sort of want to reiterate. So I guess my question would be, even though some of the other counselors don't agree, how many, you know, of the pension members agree, you know, paying a stipend? And then also, I guess I'm curious if the, you know, the members of the board themselves are all, you know, in favor of, you know, of receiving a stipend? Are they all asking together for a stipend based on, you know, the amount of work that they're doing, or, so I guess, so my question, my point is, I guess, the fact that, you know, you're generating revenue this year, the, you know, the investments are doing well, the fact that 14 out of 16 retirement systems in Western Mass pay, that really has nothing to do with what happens here in North Adams. I mean, it's supporting evidence, but, you know, I guess my question is in line with Counselor Wilkinson. How do the members feel, and how does the board feel?
Okay, so typically, our oversight agency is called PARAC. It's a state-run agency. Typically, throughout the state, the board, the way this process has run is the board would vote to send it to city council. We had some issues with that, questions on that, so we got an illegal opinion from our attorney who contacted the Ethics Commission and said that we cannot vote on it. So I can't, I...
You don't have a sense of how your board feels about requesting a stipend from the city council?
I know that the majority of them are in favor of it.
Okay.
I don't exactly know the position on one of them, and there wasn't a vote taken, so I can't commit to that.
And how, I know there's attendance issues at some of the other boards in the city, so I guess my last question, and then I'll stop.
Sure.
I know this is not a, you know, you're not subpoenaed here, but attendance is an issue at some of the other boards in the city. Are your board members attending regularly?
Excellent attendance.
Okay.
And when they're out of town, we adopted a phone, where you can attend by phone. The name of it eludes me, but we adopted a section of the law that allows them to call in and attend the board meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Counselor Harpen.
Yeah, I just have one more question, because it does seem like a lot of the council is concerned about the membership. So I think, you know, personally, it probably would be a good idea to maybe postpone this for some time until you get, you know, some kind of poll or whatever from your membership. So, you know, that way, you know, you're satisfying, you know, because they said they agree, but they would feel more comfortable that way, so...
That's fine.
You know, I would advise to do that. Is there a certain amount of time you would need to do that?
I would probably need two months.
Counselor LaForest, you said that was your last question? I lied. I have one more question. Was there anyone over here first? Just making sure. I was seeing, he'll hog all the questions. Okay, so Counselor LaForest, go ahead. So you said that we've met 75% of our obligation to the pension system?
We are 75% funded, which means if the town closed up shop today, we have 75% to pay everybody what they're entitled to. Does that make sense?
Through the chair to the mayor, are we closing up shop today?
No, but it's a way to raise it.
Meeting's not over yet.
I'm sorry.
The meeting's not over yet.
No, that's right. Okay, thank you. So a couple of concerns that I have, and again, I wanted to wait to see if they came out. One, I just, you know, you did mention Western Massachusetts, there's 14 out of 16, but then you also did mention there's 104 systems, so I'm just curious, the percentage of that that actually is. And then again, the other question is, does it really matter? Because when it comes to North Adams, typically, our numbers don't compare to other communities anyway. Our, most of our employees are underpaid when it comes across the state, you know, and then when you compare to what the retirement board does to other boards, and the difference is obviously where the money's coming from, but I always like to compare it to like the school committee. And, you know, in the school committee, actually, they have to run a campaign, they have to spend money to run that campaign. They're in charge of nearly half our budget annually, and they don't get paid anything. But I'm not sure about stipends. Part of this issue is that the state has set a stipend of a minimum of $3,000, so it's not like you can come in and say, "We want $1,000," or something smaller to cover our reimbursements. So we're sort of stuck with that figure. It's either $3,000 to $4,500, or nothing. That's sort of what you get for an option based off of what the state is telling us we can do. And again, we can only approve the stipend. I think once we approve the stipend, it's up to the board to decide what amount they want in between that. So your board could say, "We want $3,000." Your board could come back and say, "We want $4,500." Again, maybe, I don't know if that can be somehow thrown into the polling of, you know, unless you automatically have an amount in place. While it doesn't affect our budget, it, in a sense, sublimely sends out a message, a precedence to other boards, you know, because, again, people think and hear what boards, and why does one board get zero and one get something else? I do believe our Board of Assessors gets, it's a funny number, but it's $1776. That's what they get, $1776, and they've been getting that for a long, long time. And I don't know of too many other boards or committees. Anyone over there? We got any numbers from, any other boards or committees we know that get paid?
Doesn't the, the beverage board gets a stipend?
Yeah, that, I'm not sure, but most boards do not. So, and I would hate to say, well, they work harder, they, you know, as you could all say, you're putting in your time, your hours, but you do. You're required to do a few things that other boards aren't, and I would like to say, yeah, sure, there should be some reimbursement for that. And again, the way the state has this set up, it's either $3,000 minimum or nothing. I think it would definitely be some ease on the council if we knew your membership approved this. I guess I have a question mark based off of what Counselor Buddington was saying, and I'll probably throw this at the mayor and maybe your financial people. Does this affect the budget in any way annually, which I don't think it does, but the way Counselor Buddington, it was like, we're responsible, I guess, more or less, if you close shop?
I don't believe it. I'm going to have my team back me up on this. It wouldn't affect the amount a person is paying in. It affects how the retirement system is allocating funds under their control.
Yeah.
So an individual, an individual retiree wouldn't be, you know, whatever the fractional percentage of that 22.5, if it were at the upper limit, isn't going to be added to their pay-in. It would be within the funds under control.
What do we get? Eventually, it would be billed back to the member community, North Adams, McCann, the other ones. So if it was $15,000 in 19, it would be part of the calculation, back to the communities, our contributions? Or does it come out of your earnings?
I don't believe that. My understanding...
Can I please, you got to speak into the mic, sorry.
My understanding is that it comes out of the investment earnings. Now, our target investment rate is seven and a quarter, and over the 30-year, 33-year history, we've averaged, I believe, 9%. So I don't believe that it would, but I would have to get back to you for a final answer.
Do we have any other comments? Just Counselor Buddington and Counselor Lamb.
Just a quick follow-up. My...
Just a quick follow-up. My assumption perhaps is that when the fund overperforms, as it often does, the city indirectly benefits in the long term because we need to contribute less.
Not annually. You can never reduce what you're paying, but it shortens up your schedule.
Oh, to become a hundred percent?
Correct. And once you're a hundred percent, you're only paying the normal cost.
Okay, but all of the income to the fund, all of the money that runs this fund is coming from contributions from city employees, correct?
It comes from the employees, from the city appropriation and in the investment earnings, yes.
Okay. And finally, I just want to quickly mention that on my short list of boards that require a lot of expertise and education to do well are the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, which I think-
Do not.
Right. They do not get a stipend, but if we were looking at this in the big picture, and I'm not suggesting we go there tonight, those would be at the top of my list.
The other question I'm going to throw out, oh, sorry, Counselor Lamb, yes, yes.
Just to your question about how many communities in the Commonwealth total, it's on the sheet that you had provided, it says seventy-two of a hundred and two. So about seventy percent-ish are providing stipends.
We're within the thirty percent range, which doesn't sound as bad. To the mayor, again, and maybe through your staff, the, oh, sorry, I may have lost focus here. Well, let's skip that. Any other councilors? And this right now is just a communication.
This is a communication.
Right, so we have nothing really to vote on tonight other than filing your communication.
Okay, so if I file it, can I bring it back in a couple of months, is I guess?
No, so we'd be postponing it?
Yeah.
Okay, even though it's not really a motion requesting anything? Postpone it? Yeah, all right. Any discussion from the public? Yes. Name and address for the record.
My name is Joseph Smith, and I'm the landlord of 140 Pleasant Street. I don't know a lot about this issue, but a couple of things come to mind hearing what has been put out here. One would be, how much money are the people laying out of their pocket to attend this conference and get the eighteen credits? The other thing is something that Mr. LaFaro's mentioned, lack of participation. And one thing I think that you guys should think about is that sometimes when you don't offer a stipend, you are reducing the amount of the population that can afford to volunteer for these kinds of things. And if you want a wider participation rate, something that is a minimal amount of money that makes the difference to get those people to volunteer, I think is very important. The other thing is that if you're looking, the other question elaborating on what you were saying, which I didn't get the full vibe on myself, was the investments. And how much interaction day-to-day or week-to-week or month-to-month are they having with the people that they end up choosing as a broker, I think is important. If these gentlemen have been, or some of them, or ladies, whoever is on the board, has been there for twenty years, and if over this consistent amount of time they've been in the top performing, I think that's another reason, as far as retention, that you should think about this. I don't think pulling the membership should be as important when something's doing well on the high end and it's going to come out of something that's already performing well on the high end. I think you should more think about the fact that you have trouble filling seats on things, and if you make it easier for people from all walks of life in the community to participate, really at the end of the day, between three thousand and forty-five hundred is not something to worry about. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public? So are we looking for a motion to postpone?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we need a motion to postpone. I guess we're looking for about two months down the road.
Okay, so I will make a motion to postpone this issue until August 28th.
Second meeting of August?
The second meeting of August, yes.
Do we have a second? Counselor Lamb, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion postponed. Thank you. If anyone wishes to leave at this time, that was here for the Retirement Board or the Rees-Across America, please do. Okay, we will be moving now back to the beginning of our agenda, to paper number eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-one, Communication from Council President Bona Regarding the City's Shooting Range. This was in City Council, March 27, 2018. It was voted to postpone to the June 26 meeting. I know since then, we have had some Public Safety Committees. Without objection, I will file the communication. And I guess, well, we do have some new information tonight. Mayor, do you plan, do you want to discuss that now?
I can discuss it now or I can discuss it during Mayor's conference.
All right, so first, I guess I'm going to, since Counselor Lamb was president of the Public Safety Committee, is there anything you want to report at this time?
So I can say the Public Safety Committee met twice. We had two really good, robust meetings and discussed the rules as they stood. And, well, actually, we started off just hearing what folks wanted and what they were interested and concerned about. We provided all of that material to the mayor's office for review, consideration, thoughts, received notations back, brought those again forward for another meeting, had another really robust conversation. There was some slight policy changes, but nothing dramatic, and that was really where we left it at that point.
So all the councilors should have received a paper this evening, somewhere, right here?
We can.
Yeah, and so we just received this right before the meeting, so if Mayor, if you wish to read this into the record or explain it, please do so.
Absolutely. I'll begin with a little background, piggybacking off of what Counselor Lamb said about the, beginning with the March, I'm sorry, the February 13 meeting, which introduced this issue to council, followed by the March 14 meeting of the Public Safety Committee, which generated a list of, I want to say about twenty-five or twenty-six questions related to the operation of the range, ranging from everything to rules, to maintenance, to revenue, to potential future improvements. Following that, there were a number of questions that we investigated and questions specifically related to liability. And what we did in the interest of safe, you know, good governance, was we consulted with our insurance carrier. And when we informed them that we were asking questions with regard to the gun range, they were honestly surprised to know that we had one. And the fact is that we are a rare municipality. We may be the only one in the Commonwealth with a public gun range, but certainly one of the few that Maya, the insurance provider, knew about. Once they learned that we had a range, they indicated that while our policy for the current fiscal year was allowable, they would continue to cover it, as of July 1, 2019, the gun range would no longer be insured. It's also important to note that even with the current coverage, the range rules as they exist reduce our existing liability coverage because they don't fall under what is called the public use statute under the Mass General laws. And those basically say that any public facility cannot have restrictions on access, which is to say, charging a fee for use, requiring a permit, putting age restrictions. So several things that are incumbent in our existing range rules do represent a limitation of liability, but they're the existing rules. So based on that information and consultation with my team, with the Director of Public Safety, the decision I have made is to close the range for public use effective December 31, 2018. After that date, the range will remain open for police certification and training, but public use will be prohibited as of that time. I hope that does provide time for the current permit holders to make other arrangements for use. All permitted range users will receive a letter later this week. It'll be going out tomorrow, a copy that went to the councilors this evening, and with your indulgence, I will read the letter. "The status of the North Adams Shooting Range on Patterson Road was addressed at the February 13, 2018 meeting of the North Adams City Council, and subsequently considered at meetings of the Public Safety Committee of the Council on March 14 and May 9, 2018, as well as input from range users and neighbors provided over the course of several months. The central question related to these discussions has been how to balance the interests of permitted range users with the concerns of neighbors and butters. When considering this question, my staff conducted a thorough review of the range rules, their applicability under state law, and their relationship to the city's current insurance coverage. Key findings include the following. The use of public land for recreational purposes is governed by state statute, specifically the recreational use statute within Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 21, Section 17(c). The city's insurance carrier has advised that charging a fee for recreational use, as with the annual permit fee at the shooting range, greatly reduces the city's liability coverage on public land under the recreational use statute. The insurance company also notified the city that as of July 1, 2019, the shooting range will no longer be covered under the city's insurance policy. Without the restrictions provided by the range rules and given the impending loss of insurance coverage, the North Adams Shooting Range will be closed to public use effective December 31, 2018. Until that date, the current range rules remain in effect. As of that date, the only allowable use of the range will be for the training, certification, and recertification of North Adams police officers and recruits. I understand that the decision to close the range may be unwelcome to some and applauded by others. Ultimately, however, this decision was made in response to the questions that were raised and the resulting findings from the city's insurance carrier."
Questions? Bing, bing, bing. Let's start with Counselor Lamb, Counselor LaFaro's, Counselor Bunnington.
So I'm disappointed, I think, overall about what has transpired here. And I'm a bit worried, not just about this particular situation, but the rabbit hole this could lead down, especially with thinking about Windsor Lake as a public recreational space that we do charge a fee to utilize.
We charge for parking.
So what is that?
We charge for parking.
Okay.
And that is an allowable under the insurance.
Okay. You know, I think, fortunately or unfortunately, this letter lays it out pretty cut and dry in terms of what the situation is with our insurance. And I don't know if there's creative solutions to fill that gap in insurance capacity. I don't know what the timeline is between when you receive the information about the insurance and when we've received this either, so I'm not sure how much in-between work has been done since then and now. Is there, do we have a timeline of like how all this sort of came together?
We've been working on it for a couple of weeks, trying to get the information lined up so that we could bring it back today for this because this was coming back onto the agenda.
Thank you.
Counselor LaFaro's and Counselor Bunnington.
Through the chair to, not necessarily the mayor, since he's only been in office seven months, but the mayor's office, two questions and then I have a couple of comments. I guess I'm shocked that the insurance company doesn't insure the gun range, but they're going to allow us, allow it to be insured for the coming fiscal year. So I guess I would ask two questions. One, how much would it be to insure the gun range for public use, charging a parking fee and not a use fee going forward?
We'd have to look at private insurance. We have not gotten a hard number, but we think it would probably be on the order of requiring an annual fee of, what do we think, a hundred, a hundred, a hundred and fifty? In that range, based on going to a private insurance and spreading that out over the number of users. The current fee is ten dollars for a resident permit.
Okay, and so question, so roughly fifty thousand dollars, five thousand dollars? What is the, I'm not-
So we have about sixty users. Can you run that on the back of the envelope?
So sixty times a hundred is six thousand dollars.
About six thousand, yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'll save my question for my comment. Question two is, how could the insurance carrier not know that we have a gun range of sixty-plus years in the city?
It was never listed in our, in our property list. Do you want to take the specific-
There's one piece that's missing is that gun ranges right now are not excluded from being insured. They were not aware that we were running a public gun range. Many municipalities have a gun range for use by police and others. They did not realize we were running a public one. Now that they're aware of that we're running a public one, they would advise us to run it under the recreational use statute to allow us the best protection under the law. What they are planning on doing is adding public ranges to their excluded list of recreational allowance. So that would mean effective nineteen, that it would be excluded. As of right now, they've already, we've already contracted with next year's insurance, and it's not a non-excluded use. So that's why it's still insured.
Okay, so my comments, if I may, and again, this is to the mayor's office, I think the city needs to figure out a way to, or my opinion is that the city should reconsider closing the gun range. The gun range has been in use for over sixty years. At the two committee meetings that we held, there was no indication, no direction of conversation indicating that the course would be closing. The two best-attended meetings that I have seen in my seven months as a city councillor have been meetings held in regard to the gun range and to the airport. So my last comment is that we seem to be able to spend an awful lot of money. There's reappropriation of seven hundred thousand dollars on the table tonight. There's requests for hundreds of thousand dollars to be spent for various purposes, and we're closing a very popular gun range, not popular for everyone, but a very popular gun range for the tune of seventy-five hundred dollars. And I think that's a real shame, and I am shocked that this was not made public or available to council sooner.
Counselor Bunnington.
Yes, this is, if I may, through the chair to the mayor, a simple question, I think.
Sure.
Your letter says that the shooting range will no longer be covered under the city's insurance policy. I trust that police training use of the range will still be-
It will still be, yes.
Any other councilors? I think Counselor Bunnington and Counselor LaFaro's were sort of going in the direction of bringing pieces together that make me think. So basically, it looks like currently the insurance would cost us about six thousand dollars. That is additional to what we may have to pay because it's already a gun range for the police, or the police, if it's just a police range, that's just included within our insurance anyway? It's like, if we had no range at all, even for the police, versus a range just for police, does that cost us anything additional insurance-wise? I'm not expecting you might know this off the top of your head, but that's what I'm thinking. Like, if we eliminate the range altogether where police can't use it, versus we have a range where police can use, is there a change in the insurance rate because of that? And that six thousand dollar figure, that, you know, it's an estimate based off of sixty members times a hundred or a hundred and whatever, is if there is an additional just for having a gun range for the police, is that six thousand additional to that, or is that part of that, you know?
No, again, I would look to correction on this, but the private insurance would be for public use. The effect of our insurance coverage does not change with the police use.
The officers carry their own insurance, or the department carries insurance?
To the mic.
I got it.
To the mic.
I got it.
Mike, Mike. The officers qualify once, sometimes twice a year. Every officer is an employee of the city. There's strict guidelines and rules that go into effect. The range is closed. No one from the public is allowed in while we are practicing, qualifying at the range. Every officer is a city employee. Every officer has insurance.
Every officer has insurance. It is indemnified by the city. In the event there's any injury or anything like that, it would be a service-connected, job-related injury. So there is no public access. The range is closed when we're up there, if that's any help to you.
Thank you. Counselor Wilkinson.
My only comment, I guess, is I would have liked to know about this a lot sooner rather than having this sprung on us tonight. I guarantee you—and maybe there are people on their way down here tonight because some of them I know are that way. This audience would have a whole lot more people in here if this letter had been released in advance. So this is going to go by the wayside tonight, and we're all going to hear as councilors get telephone calls tomorrow saying, "What are you doing?" And they're just not going to understand. Certainly, as Counselor Lamb led committee after committee after committee, trying to work things out with everybody that was involved, and now within—I got mine three minutes before the council meeting started, all of a sudden this is a dead issue. There's going to be some very unhappy people. And I think we all have to think on our way home tonight is to get our facts together between all of us because we're going to have to answer some pretty angry people tomorrow.
Counselor La Forest.
So I just want to be clear. So Maya will continue to cover the gun range for police use, or is that covered under police insurance? I guess I didn't understand the answer to the question.
It's all the same.
It's all the same. Okay. So Maya covers—okay. And Director Casaleo mentioned city employees. Is it going to be open to other city employees or only members of the police department?
The only use will be for police training and certification.
Okay.
So this is a letter from the mayor. This is a—you know, originally started as a communication. We have reports from public safety. Currently, what is in front of us is the vote to file this. Initially, before this came out tonight, it was either going to be vote to file or vote to postpone if the public safety still had more discussion and plans. I guess, without this letter or Counselor Lamb, what was going to be the plan? Was the public safety done, or were they going to—let's say we didn't know about this.
So based on the conversation that we had, like I said, we were not planning on making any changes from the committee perspective whatsoever. We were—you know, after hearing the discussion, you know, there was some—again, some—I would say minor, but there was some minor tweaks made to the policies as they stood. It, you know, generally felt as close to a positive compromise as possible between all parties in the room at the time. And what we had discussed was likelihood of trying to get this conversation back on the docket once a year just in order to have a conversation about how is it going? What—you know, are there new issues that ever is and things like that? The other thing that I would say is that the community around the gun range really did come together in terms of trying to improve their facility for their use, whether that was picking up garbage, or it was, you know, a different level of self-policing to make sure that inappropriate use wasn't occurring and things like that, which felt to be going down a positive kind of community buy-in, similar to the cemetery where people were bought into the operation that they wanted to see. Again, we were not making any formal proposal to do anything, and that's really where it was left at the end of our June—or, sorry, May meeting that we had.
So tonight, we would have—you would have voted to file—
We would have been closing—it—yeah, I feel like, you know, without this communication, we would have been—
Yes, Counselor Cohen.
I guess my question is, is this solving the problems that we initially had the discussion about?
Well, it would—
Closing the range to—
It would close it, so—
Public.
It would solve the problem for the neighbors.
So the noise and every—that—they would have no issues after that?
Yeah, unless—you know, I mean, there's going to still be some noise based off of when the police are up there training and sighting in their guns, but, you know, I'm—I'd—like I say, I think the mayor, you know, said some will applaud this and some will be unhappy about it, and I believe that's the truth. There are neighbors up there who would prefer there not to be a—the gun range, you know, hearing the noise, safety and other reasons. I guess if we file this, it puts us to bed, but at the same time—oh, yes, go ahead, Counselor Lamb.
I also just wanted to clarify. So the original concerns were not—a—that wasn't the major concern that we were addressing. We were addressing concerns by the users about the policies that had been put in place in 2015. And so it was—while the conversation obviously included—when we started having the meetings, it included the sound piece, that was not why we started having those meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. Counselor Buddington.
Just a question on procedure. Since there has been no specific proposal for an ordinance change or an order or anything else, I trust that if this communication is simply filed and left, that the council is free to address the issue in substantial form at any point, right? We're not ruling that out, no matter what we do tonight. Is that correct?
What's that? Well, but it depends on, like, the original discussion, which was about the changing of hours. That's what was originally discussed. Sorry. The question is, if we file it, it can't come back for another year, but it was particularly what we opened this up was about the hour change and things like that. My—I feel like there's questions. I mean, there's questions. Counselor La Forest asked questions. I mean, we have an estimate of what insurance might cost us. I don't know how much has been shopped around. I don't know if it's even something—again, this really does fall into the hands of the administration. I mean, you know, when this first came to council, you know, I kept thinking like it belongs in Park and Rec, but Park and Rec doesn't handle the gun range. However, it almost makes it sound like the insurance company is saying it should go under Parks and Recs for the future. Is that—would that be true, Mayor, if it was something to continue?
It falls under the recreational use provisions of state statute, so in the sense that both the statute and the commission have the word recreation in them, yes.
Okay. So for the council to be doing the discussion we have was unique because it maybe should have went to Parks and Rec or some other board. The—you know what? It's—I'd hate to see it filed because I feel like there's still unanswered questions, but I don't know if it should go back to committee to hear more about this. So I'm sort of looking for guidance from counselors, what they might like to see it do. Counselor La Forest.
Would we be—would we be having a discussion on a closed gun range? I don't understand what the committee would do. We have no authority here, and the mayor has indicated that the range is going to close. So as much as I would like to have an opportunity to discuss this with our constituents again, it seems the decision's been made outside of council authority. So I guess—I—it—so through the entirety of this process, it's been unclear that the council had any authority at all, other than to have a conversation with our constituents, which is what we did. And it was—it was never on the—this was never on the horizon. The horizon was always that, you know, as Counselor Lamb, Chairman Lamb, you know, indicated that we were, you know, tweaking the regulations that were created by essentially an ad hoc committee on behalf of Mayor Alcombreit in 2015. So I—I'm sort of lost as to know what to do. We really have no say here, which is unfortunate.
Counselor Lamb.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with Counselor La Forest, and I think the only—the only reason slash mechanism that I would see it going back to committee would be if there was a meddable nature by the administration to consider a private insurance piece if the other pieces could be figured out to make that happen. And, you know, we know that with any project, there are other ways to navigate that when you put, you know, a variety of people around the table. So I don't know if that's something where this is a sign sealed and delivered, this is drop dead, there's no ifs, ands, or buts, or if this is an opportunity for us to take some time and to put some more work into seeing if this is—you know, this is the current state of affairs, but is there an alternative mechanism to allow for continued public use, which may include a higher fee, may include, you know, this, that, and the other thing, a necessity to fundraise, whatever?
A line item in the budget?
A line item in the budget, you know, thinking that through more dynamically. That would be the reason why I could see it going back to committee. Yeah.
Counselor Wilkinson.
I have to agree with everything that's said here. This is out of the auspices of the council. This is administrative function. Doesn't mean that—I don't think it should go back to committee because I have to agree with Counselor La Forest that there's really nothing to talk about. This is pretty cut and dry here. Doesn't mean that there couldn't be an informal discussion outside a committee in order to try to find a solution to it. It could be remained unofficial. Maybe a counselor or two could meet—I'm sure, as I say, we're going to hear about this tomorrow, and there's going to be concern, and a counselor could meet with the mayor and say, "Look at—I'm hearing from my constituents," and—pardon me—they're pissed, and it's a matter of—we're looking for a way for a solution. There is a solution out there. We've discussed it tonight. It's a matter of a different type of insurance. We certainly spend a lot more on paper clips, and it looks like the insurance is going to cost in the school budget. So my opinion is we should probably—I don't know, because of all the technicalities here, whether it could be filed because then it can't come back for a year, but there must be a way of putting this to rest where we leave the future open for maybe a solution.
Well, one option, we could postpone it for a few months. You literally could postpone it if there are these options that are out there. One concern I have is, once this is closed to the public, it will be difficult to ever bring it back because then it would—could be considered a change of use. And right now, it is open to the public, and bringing it back would—I think would be far more difficult. While this is a decision on the administration, I feel like if we can postpone this for a few months, we can always bring it back a few months and say, "We file it, it's done." But this is all new news tonight. This just came about, and I personally am not ready to put it to bed. I don't know even if it's to have a committee meeting for discussion. We have no authority over it, but I feel like maybe a committee meeting where, again, the council's here to hear the public come in, say their piece, because this is new news. And, you know, really, if you look at the committee meetings you've already had, that was what a lot went on. There was venting, there was ideas, there were suggestions, and maybe there can be more of that. But again, it does come down to the decision of the administration at the end, but I think we can be that liaison in between also. Yes, Counselor La Forest.
Is the—through the chair, is the gun range zoned as a gun range, or does that reside within a residential zoning? So is this—
R2.
Is this a change of use for the gun range within a residential zoning?
It's grandfathered.
It is grandfathered?
Yes.
So this wouldn't affect the—well, I—I'll motion to send the communication—the initial communication from February 13th back to the Public Safety Committee for the sake of having a non-binding conversation with our constituents.
With a return date of—
Well, let's pick something out. We'll go past August 28th. Why don't we say the second meeting in September, September 25th?
Okay.
That gives us three months to hold a meeting.
So we have a motion on the floor to postpone this to September 25th with a sec—uh, from La Forest, second from Lamb. Counselor Wilkinson.
Just for clarification, it remains a public gun range until what date?
December 31st.
December 31st?
Current—
So there is—
Current permits run through December 31st.
Thank you. So there is still time for all those that are panicking out in TV land. There is still time to find a solution. There may not be one, but this isn't going to be a dead issue tonight.
Any other from council before I pass it on to the public? Anyone from the public want to speak on this? Yes. Name and address for the record, please.
David Dunn. I live on 32 Bracewell Avenue in—right here in town. I was at the meeting back in May when discussion from the public went through, and there were a number of people who were talking about noise issues. And a study was done, and the information that was received in that meeting stated that there was a level of sound that the city had as an ordinance level for—you know, once we exceeded that, you were too far. One of the people here did a study, and none of the sounds from the range that was done on Reservoir Road exceeded that limit at all. That's number one. Number two, the range has been around since about 1962, so that sounds like it's about 56 years or so. So if you've moved into the area after the range was there, knowing it was there, or if you didn't do your homework, that's not our fault. Okay? I don't hear—or I've never heard any accidents or liability from the range from the public to cause any issues. The mayor stated that with minimum liability because of being paid for by the public to use it for public use of the range, that wasn't an issue. I'm getting the sense that the discussion's here is just a shell, and the decision's been made, cut and dried, and I don't think that's right. It's been around for many, many years, and the public should have a say in that. It's been around for—some of you weren't even born when it was here, when it started. So I think the public should have more input before the decisions are made, cut and dried. I think that if they had to increase that—the cost for a public to go there at some point, maybe that can be talked about. But right now, the public use is only four days a week.
Mr. Dunn, just so you know, your two minutes are up, so if you want to just finish it off, please do.
I—I—I hope that this can be discussed further and not just decision made, and the meeting in September isn't just a facade.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Yes, one in red, then one in teal.
My name is Allison Lyons, and I'm from 17 Gunther Street here in North Adams. I am quite disappointed in this decision by Mayor Bernard. I think there are 11 other municipalities within the state of Massachusetts who operate public ranges, and I'd like you to take a look at those locations, one being Barnstable County, Harwich, and see what they're utilizing for insurance. Happy to pay $100 fee to utilize a range in my neighborhood.
Thank you. The gentleman in the back there.
Homeodyne at Patterson Road. And before you throw bricks, I'm one of the permit holders for the range, and I've been out of town. Explaining to a couple of my neighbors that the noise issue doesn't exist because the range is exempt in Massachusetts. You may not know this. If the ordinance—the range only has to comply with an ordinance that was in effect when the range was constructed. There was no ordinance, so it doesn't exist. At the same time, there are three private buildings within the 500-foot range of the building. The range is also exempt for that. So if that comes up as an issue, it doesn't exist either. I'm trying to go through a few of these things for people. I wasn't going to bother, but I'll give these to the mayor's office so you can have them, just for the heck of it. Mr. Lyons did some decibel testing. I'm sure he did, and either he misread the instrument or he had bad instruments because even a .22 rifle at 30 feet away has decibel level of 141. This is a list with references on the bottom as to where it came from. We don't—we're not playing games off of YouTube. Average decibel level at a range is in excess of 140 decibels. Doesn't matter. I'll put it till yesterday. I was a proponent of the gun range. I'm licensed to carry in 38 states, and I'm not a member of the police because they can do it in 50-plus. I started doing some reading.
That's why I remind you, you do have two minutes, so—
Okay. I'm going to leave this at the mayor's office, and I will put copies on a disc. This is from the DEP of Massachusetts, revised in 2002. How to manage the lead and the pollution at your gun range. There's a 103-page article from 2005 from the EPA.
So your two minutes are up, but I'm going to let you finish it up here quick.
Barnstable, $7.9 million in 2015, had an assessment done as to what to do with their public range. We're looking at a financial nightmare unless the city operates the range the way it should be run.
Right. Thank you.
Thing to do about closing it, but it needs to be run properly.
All right. Thank you. Uh, who else? It was, yeah, you, uh, you went with the denim jacket and then Mr. Juris.
My name's Sean O'Keefe. I live at 38 Bracewell, apartment 6. I've been using the range for like seven, eight years, but, um, I'm definitely okay with paying a little extra for private insurance on the range if it requires that, just to keep it open. So, it's kind of upsetting to find out today that you all want to close it, or at least the mayor wants to close it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Juris. Name and address for the record, please.
Excuse me. James Juris, 474 Patterson Road. Um, as you know, I've spoke to the-
Speak, wind to the mic, please.
I've spoken to the committees many times before. Um, I hold a wastewater engineer's license from the state of Massachusetts. I've told you about the environmental concerns. Nobody's talked about the lead concerns. No one. Police Department, nobody mentions it. It's going to cost the city again, many dollars of liability upcoming. Nobody's mentioned that before. It's not just safety or use of the range. It's liability down the line, down the road, and I think people don't understand that. Um, if we want to do an environmental impact study, we'd be, I'd be glad to bring in, you know, some of the, some of the colleges here. Um, I'd be glad to participate in it as well. Um, that's what you're looking at and, um, it's going to be a major issue for us. I'm a taxpayer. I don't want to spend that extra money cleaning this thing up. It's going to be a major concern down the line, whether it's you or your kids. So, remember that.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public on this issue? Yes, uh, do you, do you want him to speak?
Tom.
Mr. Ryan, do you want to use this mic?
Well, sure, save me a little.
Name and address for the record, please.
Tom Ryan, 530 Knott's Road, North Adams. Um, I feel bad because this is going to hurt my neighbor, Billy Maranti. He's the best neighbor you could ever find in this whole town and I hope he doesn't get upset at me, but like he said and a lot of other people said to me, "Well, you knew the range was there before you built." "Oh, yeah, I did. I bought, I bought my land 33 years ago and I've been, and I've been there, oh, I don't know, 91 I've moved in." Okay, I've been there a long time. In the old days, it wasn't bad. Joe Blow and his dog would go up there and they'd shoot, uh, and get their sightings in and all that stuff. They'd spend a half hour there and they'd go home. We got guys like this guy over here that is probably brought up on the tories and now he wants to play real war. If he wants to play real-
Don't, don't make it personal. Just keep to the issues.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I promised myself I wouldn't, I promised myself a long time ago, when Barrett left this place, I'd never show up in his room again.
Well, you're here now and you got only two minutes.
But here I am. But when I moved there and for many years, it was good. Now, everybody's recreational shooting. They're not going up there to sight their guns in. What are they going to do? Bring up three boxes of shells and, and shoot 150 rounds? It's nuts and it's getting worse because these younger guys, it brought up on the tory screens and all that stuff, they want to play war. Well, hey, I got a few thousand dollars I can blow this year out of ammunition, so I don't know. That's my feeling, so.
All right.
But before, it was good and it's, you know what? Since the last meeting, it's been almost quiet there. Like 75% of the people haven't been there.
Thank you.
There's only, there's only-
Your two minute, your two minutes are up, so wrap it up. It says your two minutes have ended, so wrap it up.
All right, all right.
Okay.
You probably won't see me here again, I don't know.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Uh, yes, Mr. Smith.
Uh, my name is Robert Smith. I live at 140 Pleasant Street. Um, I'm just wondering how popular this place has been over 60 years if, if a lot of people in the community were not aware of it being there. Now, my concern is that if the mayor wants to get involved with keeping this range functional, I have a question. How many percent of the population in our community actually uses this facility? Is it really worth us getting involved with spending money through a private insurance company to maintain it? That's the concerns I have and my concern's always been, since I come up here and I joined this community, that we have to be careful with our money, that we have to spend it on things that apply to the, the majority of the community. I mean, there's some council members here are saying, "Oh, we're going to hear from people tomorrow, they're going to be upset," but how many percent of the community is going to be upset? There's, there's 100% of community here. How many are actually using this facility? Is it really worth getting involved with spending extra money for a private insurance company to maintain it for a small segment of this community? That's the point I want to make. So, I agree with the mayor. It, it's really out of his hands unless he goes to a private insurance company. I don't really think it's worth it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Lyons. Name and address for the record, two minutes.
Rob Lyons, 17 Gunther Street. Yes, again, this saddens me. First and foremost, I'd like to apologize to all the members. This is not what I had intended at all. Um, I was really just hoping to get the range cleaned up and maintained, whether it be mowing the lawn, taking trash out, whatever it took. Um, I really feel as if when we're talking about liability insurance, I can't imagine that the liability insurance could, why they would turn away a gun range over a public facility as a skate park where kids smash their heads all day long or a swimming area where kids can drown. More kids drowned than get shot every year in the United States. Every day, hundreds of kids drowned, but the liability insurance will cover that. Makes no sense to me. At $6,000, I have no problem. I have no issue or reason thinking that we could not, as a public, as members, be able to raise that money to keep this range going and involved and being able to utilize it as a public facility. As, one other thing I'd like to mention is as a public facility, as an area that is owned by the public, not the city, and we, the taxpayers, pay for this land, whether we like it or not. Why do we leave it in charge of one person or two people in that fact when any kind of biasm could be insult, in, in, involved in any of that? Why is it not left up to the council? Why is everything else in the town left up to committees and council, yet this property is left to two people? I do not understand that and is there a way that that ordinance can be changed to come back to the council, come back to parks and recs? Um, again, also, like you said, how is it that you say it, it can't be covered under insurance because it's a charge?
Mr. Lyons, just let you wrap it up, please.
What Fish, Fish Pond is. Eliminate the key charge, create it, call it a parking charge. I don't understand how this all just came about and is there any proof of insurance calls or paperwork that says what you're claiming? That's all I ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, uh, Mr. Juris, you already spoke once, so. Uh, any more from council? Uh, so at this point, the motion is on the floor to postpone this to the second meeting in September. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Well, just a point of clarification, that what we're postponing is Counselor Bona's initial communication from February 13th from Mr. Lyons. We are not postponing the mayor's decision to close.
Correct.
That has nothing to do with city council. We are postponing, again, the communication from February 13th.
It's mainly to keep the discussion open. Um, and again, if we file and close it, it would, it would make things very difficult to bring it back, so, uh, we did, did devote, all in favor again?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. That's the first item on the agenda.
I propose we move the council meetings to 6 o'clock.
Second. All right. You said propose, not move. Out of order, out of order.
Yes, you're right.
All right. Paper number 11,672, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 2-27 of the Revised Ordinance as Schedule A, Clarification Plan FY 2019. This was in city council June 12th, 2018. It was voted to pass to a second reading and published as a municipal bulletin. We need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Did you get that?
Okay.
Uh, we have discussion, a discussion from council and discussion from public. Not hearing any, this is a roll call vote.
Buddington?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
LaForest?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Motion carries. Paper number 11,672-1, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 2.28A, Schedule B, Compensation Plan FY 2019, July 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018. This was in city council June 12th, 2018. It was voted to pass to a second reading and published as a municipal bulletin. We need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
To adopt.
Second.
You just randomly picked, don't you? It was this side. Uh, yes, discussion from council and public. None? Anyone from public? No. Uh, this is also a roll call, uh, we have, uh, yeah, this is a roll call vote.
Buddington?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
LaForest?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Motion carries. Paper number 11,672-1A, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 2.28A, Schedule B, Compensation Plan FY 2019, January 1st, 2019 through January 30th, 2019. This was in city council, June 12th, 2018. It was voted to pass to a second reading and published as a municipal bulletin. We need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
To adopt.
Second.
Second, all right. Uh, discussion from council, discussion from public. Not hearing any, this is a roll call vote.
Buddington?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
LaForest?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Paper number 11,677, mayor's communication number 41, requesting year-end transfers
for FY 2018. Without objection, I'll file the communication. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, so this is a, is a standard practice, closing out the budget at the end of the year. What we're bringing forward is shifting funds from accounts with a positive balance to those running a negative balance. Uh, this happened in Pittsfield recently. You may have read about that in the, in the news. Uh, we have two sources and two orders that are being presented for your consideration. Uh, counselors, I do want to apologize for the confusion in getting materials to you, taking, the year-end close takes a little bit longer and so we went right up to the wire with this and I do apologize for that, not giving you as much time as we normally would. Uh, so you have two orders. The first is for transfers within the budget and the second is a transfer from free cash. So, as we go forward with this, I'll just ask for, uh, the ability to offer one amendment to the order when you take that up for consideration. Uh, that's the first order for the transfers from several accounts to several accounts.
Do we know that, which amendment is that? Sorry, you got the figure?
I, I do have the figure. It is on the-
Oh, is that the paper? Sorry, thank you. This here?
No. No.
All right, all right, okay, okay. So, we'll then move on to the paper. Paper number 11,677, an order transferring the sum of $661,488.71 from several accounts to several accounts. Motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
And Hopkins. Discussion. Yes, Counsel Buddington.
Um, I think I asked this last year. I'm trying to remember the answer. Um, if I may through the chair to, to the mayor or to the finance team, uh, doesn't the fact that we have spent some accounts into the negative, shouldn't that have come before the council, before they went negative? I mean, the, the budget is there to restrict spending for different accounts. So, isn't this a way of sort of rectifying, um, after the fact?
So, I'm going to, I'm going to look to, I'm going to look to my, my team on this for the, for the clarification on, on this statement if I get it wrong because I didn't answer the question last year. Um, but because the council votes on the, um, the line within the, um, the, the line item, which is to say the, the category rather than the, um, the specific budget lines, then we, then we do have the latitude within them to, to shift. Is that a, is that a accurate way to say it?
It is.
Uh, to the microphone, please.
Most of these accounts you'll find, um, they go over budget toward the end of the year, the salary accounts especially. Um, that's when we find that they're, they're going over budget in May and June and that is the only legal time that we can do transfers, um, is May and June, as, as far as I, I can tell. Mike?
We can make transfers. You can not within.
Again, if you're to speak to the microphone.
We could come for an outside source appropriation for accounts that are going negative. We knew soon enough, such as from free cash, from stabilization or from any of the other ones. As far as transferring money from within one line to other lines, it is only in May and June that you can make internal transfers from lines that have a surplus to those that have a deficit.
I, I didn't know that. That, that's a state law or?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Counsel Harpen.
Yeah, um, I know that this is normal practice, um, for any town or city to jumble things around at the end of the year and stuff, um, but it does seem like a lot, and I'm not saying a lot of dollars because, yeah, it's quite a bit of dollars, but it's also a large quantity of line items. Um, so when I look at this, I'm, I'm like, you know, there's four, well, three pages for this specific 680,000 transfer. Um, you know, some of it is small, but some of it is rather large. Um, you know, the things that were, that we budgeted for that we didn't use is concerning as well as, um, items that we did not budget for, but we used is also concerning. Um, so we budgeted for an MIS computer person last year, um, and we didn't use $54,000 of that salary, which is concerning because now we have IS issues. Um, and that seems like a fairly big amount, meaning, you know, a full year salary. So, if we had known about this, you know, early in the year, that this position is open, I'm just wondering why we didn't fill that position. So, that's one concern. The other concern is in public safety, um, the police department. For some reason, we're, we over-budgeted them 60, $76,000. So, um, I'm just wondering why we didn't use that $76,000 considering we are rated number one in crime in, in Massachusetts. That's concerning. Um, the veterans benefits, we, we knew about that. Community development, $123,000. I, you know, I'm just, that's a big number. Um, I'm wondering what that is. You know, why didn't we use that 123,000? It's not salaries, it's expenses, so I'm not sure why it was budgeted if we didn't use it. Um, and then, you know, on the other side of things, where we needed money that we didn't budget for, um, the mayor's office salaries, I'm sure that's part of the transition. I, I would think, that's my guess. Um, salaries for the fire department of 60,000, um, the health inspection services, another 27,000, and public property 22,000, cemetery 16, um, community development 43,000. Um, I'm just, you know, I, I didn't know about this during, you know, some of this stuff we talked about in, in the budget meetings and some of it we might not have. So, um, I guess it's concerning to me sitting in those meetings and not knowing about this because I might not have made the decisions that I, I made. You know, so you're saying that you can only make appropriations in May and June because that's when you become short, right? That's when the cash is not available. But isn't there something that you can do in February, March, April to see where- that's when you become short, right? That's when the cash is not available. But isn't there something that you can do in February, March, April, to see where you're at?
That would be transfers from other available funds, stabilization.
Right, but just no, I, I'm talking about like a reporting mechanism. So, you know, not necessarily...
Excuse me, if you're gonna ask a question, let, let him answer.
Uh, we do give out reports monthly, a budget report, it's part of, uh, monthly, I turn them over to Marilyn. Um, it's part of your packages, um, usually within a couple of weeks. Mr. Buddington is nodding his head yes, you remember seeing those? Yes, um, we do hand out budget reports. The items that were, um, turning, turnbacks, the surpluses, um, the mayor, obviously, obviously, the MIS, we didn't fill our position. Um, purchasing, we combined positions with Office of Community Development, um, with the, um, Mike New Valley, the Office of, uh, Community Development, and purchasing were combined, so we had a savings there.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in on a couple of these.
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
If I may. Uh, so the public safety, the police salary, was because we, we were able to meet payroll with less budget, with less overtime than anticipated. We, we, when we talked about this during the, during the budget meetings, that we estimate a certain amount of injured on duty, and the police department didn't, didn't need to draw that, that much, so we, we did have an overage there. It had nothing to do with staffing levels, it had to do with reduced overtime levels. Um, we can, we can talk about, and then the, the fireside, on the other hand, we had greater than anticipated injured on duty, which required greater overtime. Um, so the, the community development, we, we were able to also use more of our community development block grant to, to draw from that, rather than using city funds. Uh, there were a couple others that you... Um, the, the salaries in the mayor's office, those were related to transition, as well as to a retirement in that office, and a, and a, uh, sick time buyback that, that was available to that individual. Yeah, there, if there are other particular ones you'd like me to speak to, I can, I can try and do that.
Um, can I just ask one?
Uh, go ahead, then, we'll go to councillor La Forest.
Yeah, just the, the health inspection services, if you can just elaborate on that.
So that was, that was overtime and, and training when we brought a new person on at the transfer station, so we needed additional...
Okay.
Time there.
Councillor La Forest.
So I guess I, I, I share to, you know, I share concerns with councillor Harpin and, and other councilors who've not, uh, yet had an opportunity to speak, and this is all about checks and balances. It's not, nothing personal directed at, at you, so, so please don't be, you know, upset, you know, by these questions, but, you know, so that, you know, the public is aware, who may not, who may be watching, you know, on television, but may not have gone, uh, to the website to print out these documents, there are fifty-three lines, um, in, in the budget, where we have underspent, and twenty-eight lines, uh, where we have overspent. So, to shift money around, and it is, it's a lot of lines, and it's a lot of money, um, and I, I will, you know, I know I, I spoke, uh, about this at the committee meeting, you know, regarding information technology, but again, I'm, I, councillor Harpin's concerned that we didn't fill a position, and then wondered why, uh, you know, our, our information technology, uh, team wasn't where we wanted it to be. Um, but, so my question is this, and Mr. Fierro is correct, we do get a monthly receipt summary, and this is this month's summary, and I just want to point out that we're moving around six hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents to bring the budget up to where it should be, but according to this, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, through the chair, um, we have not collected six hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents in taxes and fees. So those numbers are, are pretty close, so I just, if, if you would, you know, just explain that, because I'm concerned that, as councillor Harpin pointed out, there are line items in this year's budget for FY nineteen, uh, that we may have questioned differently, or voted on differently, if we knew that there were these shortages and overages in these different accounts. Coupled together with this lack of income of roughly the, the same dollar amount, so I was, you know, if you could speak to that, it would be beneficial for me, um, and, you know, I, I also wonder why we're not doing this in committee, and we're doing it. Having this conversation here, in front of everybody, making the sausage, as it were, instead of having op, an opportunity to have an informal conversation, and, and learn why all of these things are, are, are being requested at the last minute. So if you could, you know, speak to the six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I would appreciate it.
You, you wanna take that in terms of how these things, the timing on this?
Yes, uh, the timing, if you look at the date on your report, it's through May thirty-first.
Right.
We still have a month to go.
Okay.
Typically, we take in nine hundred thousand in the month of June, so therefore, I'm forecasting that, um, our revenues, our local receipts, are going to be three hundred thousand dollars over budget. Not over budget, but if, for, for lack of a better term, we're gonna be, have a surplus of three hundred thousand.
Okay, so not to interject, but just for point of clarification, if that is so, why are we moving all this money around?
Because we're moving it between expense line items, whereas you're looking at a revenue report there.
Okay, but we wouldn't use the revenue to pay the expenses?
That will come into play for free cash at the, at the, um, close of the fiscal year. That'll be calculated in our free cash calculation.
Are we over-budgeting?
Are we over-budgeting? No, we're doing better on collections, as far as real estate and, uh, other items go, is what I'm forecasting.
Okay.
Councillor Har, are you done?
I don't know, did, so, so did you finish your answer about the six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, is that's, we'll take in nine hundred thousand dollars this month, and so...
Hopefully a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar revenue surplus.
Okay.
Councillor, um, councillor Harpin.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the same thing that councillor, councillor La Forest was looking at, so, um, I guess my question is, so yes, we are short six hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, year-to-date, compared to last year, right, in, in our receipts. Is that correct?
Thirty-first.
As of May thirty-first. So in two thousand seventeen, we received in more receipts through May than we did in two thousand eighteen.
I'm not looking at the report, I, I don't have the report in front of me.
That was what they printed through May, that's full year. It's full year.
Right, we're two percent up, are you saying?
Dave, if you wanna get to the mic, please.
I would say we're ten percent down.
I'm not looking at the line, which line are you looking at, please?
Um, I am just looking at the difference line, so that's six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, right?
That's the difference between estimated...
Okay, so we're act, okay, so year-to-date...
Year-to-date, that's how much we need, that's what we need to collect in June to get, to, yes, to make our revenue number. I predict, and we usually take in, nine hundred thousand, so therefore, we're going to have a revenue surplus, hopefully, of two hundred and twenty-two thousand.
So this difference column is the difference between May eighteen to...
No.
What we expect.
End of the year.
Year-to-date to FY eighteen estimated.
If I, if I, if I could interject, um, because councillor...
There's a month difference.
Councillor La Forest brought this up, and do, do, are you looking, do we need to approve this, this evening, or is there time for this to go to finance committee for further discussion? But I also would like to put out that, um, Mr. Fierro, you've worked on these budgets for how many years now?
Eleven.
Eleven. And, um, at least what I've seen in front of us is not unique. I mean, I would say this is sort of an average budget when it comes to transferring, um, positives and negatives. Overtime has always been one that's been a bit of a estimate. Um, you know, positions leaving, uh, coming have always been sort of the big ones, but overtime was always a big one, it seems like I remember.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I, I understand it's the first budget, and it looks like a lot of changes, but it is, it, I, I've seen page, where we've had more pages and we've had less, so I mean, it's, it's somewhat of an average budget when it comes to transferring, but...
Put it into perspective, it's one point five percent of our total budget.
Yeah, yeah. So, councillor Buddington.
Um, I concur that this is longstanding practice in the city, and I personally have no objection to budget items where it turns out the department did not spend all the money allocated to it, because there are uncertainties. Uh, what worries me, though, is, is this longstanding practice of running accounts negative, because as I understand this philosophy of this, the council approves a budget by department, and I would assume from that, that, that if the executive branch wanted to, needed to spend more than had been allocated, they would have to come to the council before doing that, otherwise, the budget ends up being advisory. And I'm, I'm, I know I'm missing a ton of detail here, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, to get educated, um, but for instance, for, for the more substantial cases where a department needed more than was budgeted, I would much prefer that, that the administration came to the council mid-year to explain, and to, so we could adjust the budget then.
And councillor Lamb and councillor La Forest.
Um, to councillor Buddington's point, I, you know, I think, uh, an explanation would probably be good at some point throughout the year. I, I know we get our reports, which I flip through, and I've, you know, probably not been in them as thoroughly as I should, um, but at the same time, when I think about the revenue stream, like we're talking about how we're expecting this amount in revenue, there's bound to be some accounts that are going to spend into deficit, and then re, be, be refilled by the end of the year. So, you know, for instance, I had a conversation just today about, um, like the fireworks for the parade, right? So like, we might not have every dollar in that account at the moment that we need to pay for the fireworks, so it's going to go into deficit, because if it starts with a zero line, it's gonna go down below that, um, and it gets refilled before the end of fiscal year, in order to clear it before the end of the year. So I think when we're looking at like the revenue, you know, anticipated revenue versus what we've actually taken in, that accounts for that to an extent, um, it's, it's not a clean nor straight line of a process for a lot of people, if they don't know like the number, um, game, but that's sort of the way that I've processed it.
So I'll go back to my original question, is the timing of our approval for this tonight versus if there's councilors here that feel like they need more in-depth detail on this, is, is that something that's...
So, we need to, we need to close out by July fifteenth, so we could bring this to the meeting of July tenth.
So, councilors, I just wanna make you aware, there is that option, if you would like this to go to another finance committee meeting to maybe discuss some of these more in detail, that is an option.
Does the calendar allow to post a meeting of the finance committee, conduct the meeting, get the report onto the agenda?
It'd be tight, but I would think so. Yeah, I mean, you need forty-eight hours, and you gotta get your committee together, but...
It's gonna be tight.
You also have the Fourth of July in there.
No, it would be, I'm not saying it's impossible, I'm just saying it would be, it would be tight. It'd be good if we could wrap it up tonight, but at the same time, you know, it depends on how much specifics and details councilors wanna get into this, so.
I don't, I, I, thank you. I don't see that it needs to go to finance. Um, I, I was a reporter for many years before, um, my, my next career choice, and I covered these things a lot, and this is pretty routine.
Yes, councillor La Forest.
I, I think we all understand that this is pretty routine, you know, in defense of councillor Harpin, I, I think, A, we have the right to ask these questions, and B, there are some line items where there is backstory to the pluses and minuses, and again, some of the, this is a, a question of checks and balances, this is not personal at the mayor, uh, or his, uh, team, because some of this predates him, but I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna play this out again, uh, before I make the motion. We have budgeted a, a position in the information technology department for three or four years that we have not filled. We have left that money floating there, year after year, the taxpayers' money, year after year, we haven't filled the position, and the new mayor comes in, and, and again, you know, he, he feels he needs a study to understand why the information technology, uh, department and structure is not where he feels it should be, and I, I can't disagree with him in, in that regard, but this is a legitimate question, this is a lot of money to be asked to spend, we didn't get all of this information in our packet, and I think the council, we have a structure, we have a finance committee for a reason, and so I am going to motion that this does in fact go to the finance committee prior to the full council voting on it.
So we currently have a motion on the floor to send this to finance committee. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Councillor Buddington has seconded. Discussion. Just, uh, yes, councillor Harpin.
Yeah, I just wanna say, I mean...
Again, this is on the particular motion.
Okay, so...
So, not specifics, this is right now, well, I guess we could be into specifics, but really...
This is just a general statement.
Okay, okay.
I'm not gonna get into specifics about any of this information. I just wanna say, um, you know, I like to review things, and maybe I'm a little bit too meticulous about it, or analytical about it, but I feel like that's my job. Um, so, um, I would like to refer it to the finance committee, maybe just because this is my first year, this is my first time doing this, it seemed like a lot to me, and like I said, the dollar amount, not necessarily, but the, the number, the quantity, um, of changes, so, um, I would just like to look at it a little bit further and have some discussion about it, um, that would be helpful.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Yep. I've been on the finance committee for, for four years, and this is, as I have to agree with councillor Hopkins, this is routine. And of course, we can all ask questions, even if you're just in the first year. What you could have asked, and I'm not just picking on you, but anybody that had questions could have called one of the finance committee, uh, people up and say, hey, I got a question, so that we're not dragging this out for a half hour on the council floor, when that, that is absolutely ridiculous. If you need an education, don't do it here. I'm more than happy to do a finance committee meeting on this, but this could very easily have been approved this evening, without going through a half hour of wondering why we didn't fill this position, or why we didn't spend ten bucks over here, why we did that. The whole discussion is ridiculous. Just my personal point of view.
Councillor La Forest.
Mr. Wilkinson, respectfully, councillor Wilkinson, this information did not arrive in the packet last week with the rest of the information.
I had one.
I'm sorry?
I had one.
Let, let councillor La Forest speak, please.
This came by, by way of email from the mayor's office, it did not come in the council packet. Some of us have full-time jobs and do not have an opportunity to make phone calls during the day. The staff at city hall does have the right to go home in the evening, and the councilors have a right to ask questions about matters regarding the taxpayers' money. That is our function, and I find it offensive that you suggest we don't have the right to ask questions.
I didn't say that.
Receive an education.
Councillor Wilkinson, please. Watch, watch, you, you, make sure your statements are accurate, that's not what I said.
All right, well, let's, let's, let's keep this banter and the specifics of, to each other. Um, the motion is on the floor, there is a second. Uh, any other discussion specific to moving this to, uh, finance committee? Keep in mind, finance committee, we have a very tight deadline, so it will have to be a quick agenda, uh, or quick to get on the calendar. Um, and any other discussion, councilors, discussion from public? Mr. Smith and Mr. Smith.
Again, Robert Smith, and I live at one forty Pleasant Street. I think, um, this should be addressed by the committee for finances, but however, um, most companies, at the end of their calendar or fiscal years, will review the expenses and the review that they, they have on their books, and they, and that's the reason why we call it a balance sheet. So if there's a lot more review, or more review than expenses, they can use that additional review to pay off some of the expenses, so they balance the books. had indicated, this information has been available on a monthly basis, so I don't know why anyone's surprised that, you know, that it's out, where it came from. If you looked at the website for North Adams and the information was there, it was up to you to review it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, name and address for the record again, please.
The landlord of 140 Pleasant Street.
Actually, give your residential address.
Oh, 131 Horrigan Road, Clarksburg.
Okay.
The thing that I just wanted to key in on was something Counselor Forrest had mentioned, which was a position being budgeted multiple years in a row and not being filled, and one thing that's concerning to me is, was this job even listed anywhere during those ti, that time? And if it wasn't, that's concerning, because then what you seem to be doing is, whether on purpose or not, you're essentially padding a line by having something that it seems you never intend to actually spend the money on, that you intend to shift later on, and I just want to be very clear that, knowing that the mayoral term started in January, that, you know, and these things are existing years ahead of time, that I'm not putting that on the current mayor at all, but I am hoping that there's more attention brought by the current council and the current mayor now, to the fact that that's not really proper to have something sitting as a line item multiple years in a row that you're never even going to list a job for, because at the end of the day, then, you're leaving $54,000 there that you, in essence, continually expect to spend on something else later, and that's not the way you should budget. The other thing I'll just mention really quickly is that you really do need to work on IT, because as you all are aware from email communication, from me, over time, that you currently don't even have all city employees on a city address, and you can't even take care of a public information request properly, because you don't have access to all official emails. So, I really would work on that IT thing. Thank you.
With this, we're going to make a roll call vote. This is to send to the public, to finance committee. I will, just so when my vote comes out, I'm going to support this, I do feel, no matter how much we discuss, I feel if there are counselors that are uncomfortable or do not feel they have all the information or have not obtained it, they have that right, and at this point, this is fairly new information, and we do have new counselors, so this is not something that, you know, not to mean that that's inexperienced, but I think there's nothing wrong with being educated and informed about what they are seeing in front of them, and you don't always get this at every committee meeting, so I will support this going to finance committee. There's a roll call vote.
Budington?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
LaForest?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Motion carries, yes.
Motion carries, so this will go to finance committee. Mr. Wilkinson.
Get back to you.
Okay. Thank you. Paper number 11,677-1, order transferring the sum of $272,632 from certified free cash to Public Safety and Public Services. We need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
And a second.
Second.
Counsel Hopkins. We need a discussion from, discussion, council. Any discussion from council? Yes, Counsel LaForest.
I will just say, I have no issue with this. Clearly, this is an over expenditure that can't be anticipated, primarily due to snow and ice removal and the accompanying hours that personnel, you know, are required to drive plows and sand trucks around the city.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council? Discussion from the public? Not hearing any, this is a roll call vote.
Budington?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
LaForest?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Paper number 11,583-1, Mayor's Communication Number 42, recommending appropriation from certified free cash to the stabilization account to balance FY '18 budget. We need, without objection, we'll file the communication. Mayor, you're up.
Great. I want to thank the council for their action just a moment ago, appropriating from free cash the items for, particularly for the winter, as the counselor noted. That leaves us with the balance of our free cash to address before the end of the fiscal year, and when we look at where that balance stands, we have $21,000 remaining, and the motion is to transfer that, or the proposal is to transfer that into the stabilization account to retain access to those funds past the end of the fiscal year, because the free cash has to be expended or appropriated before the end of the fiscal year in which it was certified.
Thank you. Paper number 11,583-1, in order appropriating the sum of $21,000 from certified free cash to stabilization to balance the FY '18 budget. Motion to adopt.
So, moved?
Second.
Discussion from council. Counsel Budington.
Just to be sure I understand, if we did not move this out of free cash, forgot to or for some reason, the money doesn't disappear, right? We would just, would, it would just be frozen for the next fiscal year until the succeeding year's free cash was certified?
Do you want to do the magic of free cash?
So, by moving it, we guarantee that we'll have it in the stabilization. If you don't, it goes into your calculation for the following year, and depending on how we come out, compared, you know, our income and our expenses, we may or may not have free cash next year. We've done this as a habit, moving it in, which has allowed us to build the free cash from, it was a couple hundred dollars a couple of years ago, Dave, was it?
Counselors, I believe you have in your materials the balance, the summary of reserve accounts, and what Mr. Canales is referring to is that in FY 2014, our stabilization account stood at $243.92, and at this, at this point, we have $975,624 in that account prior to the transfer of the additional $21,000. So, we have, we have done an impressive, I will not say we, because as has been noted several times this evening, I only get credit for what's happened since January 1st, but the city and the finance team has done a really remarkable job of building that reserve account over time.
Any other discussion? Discussion from the public, not hearing any, this, oh, yes, Counsel LaForest.
I have a quick question, so, the $300,000 surplus that Mr. Fiero indicated through the chair, that will go into the free cash account next month?
It'll go into our calculations to be certified as free cash.
For next month?
For fiscal year 2019.
FY '19, right, right, thank you.
This is a roll call vote.
Budington?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
LaForest?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Motion carries. Paper number 11,678, Mayor's Communication Number 43, recommending appropriation order to borrow the sum of $425,000 for the purchase of fleet vehicles. Without objection, it will follow the communication. Mayor.
I thank you very much. There are slides, for those of you sitting with your back to the board. Do people feel that that's good enough? Should we dim the lights, or is that, is that looking clear to everybody?
I can see them.
So, as we, as we talk about this, I just wanted to walk through what the objectives of municipal fleet planning are at a very, at a very high level, the first of them being, you know, cost control and reduced, reduced maintenance, and then the other is long-term planning, it's establishing a reliable replacement schedule over time. So, as we go forward, and I show you the, some of the state of our current public services and inspection and building services fleets, what I can, what I can tell you is that the city had a practice of doing, doing fleet purchasing, and you'll see this in the history, we purchased four vehicles in public services in 2004, we purchased four vehicles for public services in 2008, and then the financial state of the, of the city and the nation took a, took a turn, and we got out of that habit, so this is an attempt to re-establish that habit. And so, what I'm going to do is give you just the look of what the current medium truck fleet for public services looks like. So, these are, what about a dozen, a dozen of the vehicles, ranging from a 1999 through a 2016, but you'll see the majority of them are in that 10 to 14-year-old range in that, in that cycle, and what we can, what we can talk about is some of what that means in terms of, in terms of maintenance, in terms of vehicle condition, what we're seeing of those, of those vehicles. Before we do that, is everyone good with this, this projection, I can move on? Okay. So, the basic uses of the public service fleet are, first of all, snow plowing, so these, we're talking about the, the green trucks that, that are used in addition to the big, the big orange ones, and then maintenance operations for the various departments in public services, so we're talking about road and highway, we're talking about water and sewer, we're talking about cemetery, we're talking about rec facilities, and the, just the use that is put through that department on those trucks. Mr. LaScarbo, at my request, had given me kind of a walkthrough of the condition of some of those, of those older vehicles, particularly the 2000, the 2004 trucks, and he listed just a number of maintenance issues, I put a few of them, a few of them up there, you know, engine condition, rotten corrosion, wiring problems, and then for those trucks which are used for plowing purposes, dump body and plow hydraulic failures, and the estimate for, for maintenance on those vehicles is in the neighborhood of, of $30,000 annually, and we can anticipate that number would increase as the, excuse me. Well, that's no good. We're back to the question of technology, aren't we? As the, as the age of those vehicles increases. I'm going to pause here with your indulgence and ask Tim to come up, and if there's anything you want to say about your fleet particularly.
Well, I, the mayor explained it very well. We spend 63% of our highway budget just on repairs for vehicles, a total of almost $74,500, and that's all that the larger equipment is in with that number two. This is just for the, the medium-sized trucks.
I could ask a question, can we ask as we're going through this? Counsel Lamb, and then I have a question.
Yeah, so, the estimate of $30,000, is that just in the equipment that's applied, or is that including the man-hours and everything that it takes to actually do the...
That is just parts.
That's just parts, okay. That doesn't include the many hours that the crew is...
And that is on, no, actually, that's on that whole list that you had on.
Okay.
That's the whole list.
Thank you.
When discussing these numbers, if you could just be clear, such as, if it was parts, if it's in-house labor versus if we have to send it out? I know, believe you have your own mechanic that does a lot of work, correct?
We have two mechanics, and they do a majority of the work. Anything that we send out is usually warranty work, but everything else is done in-house.
Because I think unlike other department vehicles that end up at garages, they do most of their own work, so, thank you.
So, that's, that's the condition of, of public services, just to give you what the fleet for inspection services is, this is, this is inspection, this is, this is weights and measures, this is, this is building, this is health and safety. Did I miss any?
That's pretty much it.
That's, that's pretty much you, okay. See, I worked really hard to try and find a blue that matched the screen when it goes, when it goes bad. Again, that's the, that's the current condition of the, of the fleet, again, a range of vehicles from a 1998 to 2016, and while, you know, that 98 is, is a fairly low mileage vehicle, it is a vehicle that has frequent, frequent repair issues, it was purchased, used, and so it is, it has shown its wear greater than its, than its mileage. Is that a safe statement?
That is.
Counsel Budington.
Could I interject with a quick question through the chair to the mayor? Inspection Services has five vehicles, yes, but I understand we have three employees in Inspection Services? That seems like a lot of vehicles.
Well, it's also, so we've also got the public property and buildings staff, so that's...
Correct, we have all the maintenance people at all of our public buildings.
Okay, thank you.
So, as we, as we think about how those, those vehicles are used, the sedan, the Corolla or the, sorry, yeah, the Corolla and the Camry, those are, those are really the inspector vehicles when they're going around doing daily inspections, those are, those are also what we have for a travel fleet, if city employees are going to a, to a training, or they're using them for, for travel purposes. Again, with a 1998 vehicle, I'm not sure how confident anybody would be in taking one of those out of the city. The light-duty pickups are used for daily building inspections, and then the weights and measures inspections, when they've got to carry the, the equipment to do their inspections of gas pumps and larger scales, and then the heavy-duty pickup is the one that is used for public buildings, so that's the snow plowing at City Hall, Heritage Park, the Armory, Windsor Mill, the library, as well as whatever public building maintenance needs are you, are available throughout the year. So, with, with that, the proposal before you in, in the order is to appropriate $425,000 through borrowing to purchase vehicles to begin a fleet, a fleet replacement process. We're anticipating a payback on that over the course of four years at a cost of $167, sorry, $106,078 annually, and as with other purchases that we've done like this, we're, we're anticipating an interest-only payment in FY 2019 using the transfer station sticker reserve account before we get into a full, a full payback in the, in FY '20, and I'll talk about how, what that would look like, but I want to show you what the proposed fleet is. It's four of those replacement trucks for public services, and then, public services and inspection services, those, those light-duty, those light-duty pickups, one more fleet car, and then a heavy-duty pickup for, for the building department.
Counsel Wilkinson and Counsel Lamb.
This may be a silly question, I'm assuming you're purchasing these new?
That was my question.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Lamb.
So, this has sort of been an ongoing conversation since last year, especially since last year. You know, we're designated a green community, we, you know, last council did sign on to say that we were going to continue, you know, keeping to the standards of the Paris Climate Accord, to the best of our ability as a community. I don't see anything that speaks to any hybrid slash high mile-per-gallon operational utility of these vehicles, just, and I'm not a car person, so I have, like, some of these may fit into that category, but one of my questions was thinking miles per gallon, thinking hybrid, thinking, you know, the Inspection Services vehicle, for instance, I know that, you know, at the purchase price of $14,000, you really can't argue too much with that vehicle cost, but that is a vehicle that doesn't necessarily have to be, it's not plowing, so it doesn't need as many, as much oomph as a plow might, but I would, you know, I appreciate the pricing up there, I know that the cost may be a little up from what's on there, if you do look at more hybrid opportunities, but knowing what the market is, knowing that we've seen the cost of those vehicles go down in general, because they've become more commonly available, I am curious what research has been done, or could be done, into pursuing, if we're going to be spending this kind of money, like, pursuing something that aligns with our actual, you know, city kind of morals, is that the right word? I don't know, laurels, I guess we'll use that.
It's more of an ethos.
Yeah, yeah, so that's my biggest...
And so, the, so the Fiesta, not a true, not a true hybrid, but it is a, it is a, you know, a relatively high mileage vehicle comparatively speaking. The, the plow, the trucks that we're going to have out plowing, as you noted, are a little trickier to, to go with a, you know, a hybrid or an efficient model and get the, you know, get the, the power that you need from those, but certainly, we can, we can talk about the, that one, that one vehicle particularly. Mike, do you want to talk a little bit about that? I know you had, you had done a preliminary look at that.
Well, as part of the putting together, get us the green communities, working with our assessor Ross Favory and Mike Nivalli, specifically in our plans, our medium truck and heavy truck fleets are exempt, because right now, there really are no hybrids out there for plowing vehicles. Only recently have they just come out with the first hybrid vehicle for police that is an actual interceptor car, you know, but we're a little nervous about, we'll be coming in the near future with another request, because every year, we buy a new cruiser to replace, you know, we're a little hesitant to look at the first model of a hybrid interceptor, but that's on a separate subject, but like I said... But like I said, Ford F-550s, the Chevrolet Silverado, which is a 3500, those type of vehicles for plow operations and the rest, really aren't something that we can look at right now. There's really nothing available. The only other ones, the tradesmen's, are vehicles for carrying around equipment, need a larger bed. Once again, there's not a lot of options in those areas. So, really, the only one, as the mayor said, is the Inspection Service one, and that may become something down the road that may become more available.
Go ahead, Counselor Lamb. Through the chair, I can appreciate that there might not be many options, but I'm just curious if there's...
There's no options for the four...
So, for the big ones, yeah, for that one, I get, I'm just, you said for the tradesman, there's not many options.
The only option you could go to is possibly down to a smaller vehicle, such as a Frontier or something, the more mid-sized trucks...
Okay.
That we were looking at for equipment. I know specifically when we were looking at the one for public services, we want the tow capacity to be able to move some of the emergency equipment and other stuff with it. If we're in the middle of a storm, he'd be able to grab some of the equipment and tow it to a site if needed, but if you don't get the larger vehicles with the larger motors, you wouldn't be able to do that, so, yeah. So, we don't think that right now it's feasible really for anything other than the Inspection Service sedan.
Thank you.
Counselor LaForest and Counselor Harpen.
So, as with some of the other agenda items tonight, I'm not sure why we're not referring this to committee to address concerns such as the one raised by Counselor Lamb and the question I have, and since we're all here...
Is that a motion?
Well, no, not yet, but I'll ask the question and then maybe make the motion. How much are we spending on vehicle maintenance per year? Did you say, you said 30, but then I thought you said 74? Or did I miss here?
30 was just for the vehicles that were on the list.
Okay.
That doesn't include our, our back home payloaders, the larger trucks that we have, the big orange ones.
Okay.
Total, total, we're spending almost $75,000 just on parts for these vehicles.
Okay. So, I guess my, my question would be, and, and, and the point being that this, you know, evolves into a longer conversation, and it's 20 of 10.
Well, just to remind you, we actually still are on the mayor's communication, so, this is, we haven't moved to the next paper, which, you know, so, this is part of his presentation. Now, if he wants to give...
Right, so, my question is about the, is about the presentation. So, of, of the money that we're spending on vehicle maintenance, are we spending most of that on specific vehicles? Meaning, is the, is the bulk of that $74,000 being spent on specific vehicles that are either damaged with routine use because of the, the nature of plowing, snow, for example? Or, or, you know, where's the $74,000 going? And what, what are the items that most need to be replaced this year?
The trucks are the big, big dollar items.
The big four, the 550s?
The 550s, out of that 30,000, I'm, if you look at the list, there's, there's three or four that aren't those trucks on.
Mm-hmm, right.
The 30,000 is majority of the 550s, ones that plow. See, in, in '08, the four, oh fours were replaced by the '08s. So, the oh fours were put into the cemetery, parking rack, you know, but they're 14 years old now. So, the '08s will replace those.
Okay.
So, it's kind of a revolving thing. We're, we're using them before we replace the four-year-old truck. Now, we're replacing 10-year-old trucks.
Right.
A, a majority of the $75,000, I would say well over 60,000 of it are just on trucks themselves, the large trucks and the, the medium.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Harpen.
I think Mr. LaScarbo probably answered my question. My question was, what are you going to do with the vehicles that you are replacing? So, the vehicles that, you know, are high maintenance or whatever, are you trading them in? Are you using them somewhere else? What are you doing with those vehicles?
Well, the, what has happened is they're declared surplus, and then we would auction them off. I, there's already a couple of them that are parked up against the fence because they're just not safe to drive. You know, we have, we have several out in the back that's been, been parked there, but these are, these are the next set to go.
Mayor, I'm going to echo off of Counselor LaForest's initial part of his comment about the presentation we are currently getting of, like, why it's tonight versus it could have been a, its own committee meeting presentation. Is it, is this another, is this timely again? We need to get this in for the, the budget?
The only, no, the only, the only reason it's timely is, you know, we need to, if we're going to purchase these, we need to, we need to order them and, you know, get them, get them done. Again, this is, this is background to the, to the order. If, if you feel it needs a more, a more fulsome airing and, and therefore to take it to council or to committee, that, that would not...
By the way, my concern is similar to Counselor LaForest, is I feel like as we get later, we may not ask the questions. Maybe we'll get loopy and ask more questions than we need, who knows? But, but again, if counselors, we, because we actually are in the communication, so, I think what I'm going to do at this point is if we could hold off on the questions till he can get through his presentation, and then, when the paper actually comes up, if the council decides at that time they want to refer it to committee or ask more questions, but if... You're, you're not listening. No, just kidding. Go ahead.
It's a very quick question. Would the mayor's office please forward this to, this presentation, the slides to the council?
Sure.
After the, and I will ask no more questions on this.
And so, then, the last, the last one is, is the proposed payback, payback plan, and we're all getting a little loopy. The approach would be to fund $75,000 of the annual cost of that, of that debt service from the transfer station sticker reserve account. The sticker reserves, the sticker account generates about $95,000 annually, so even with the, the drawdown to, to help pay that note, we would be looking at $20,000 growth in a reserve account, which currently has $340,169 in it. And then, the balance of that, we would include in annual debt service, starting in fiscal year 2020, when we've, as we've talked before, we anticipate some, some debt coming off the books at that time. So, this, this approach is similar in, in strategy to how the police fleet renewal has been, has been handled, the source of that being the parking meter reserve account rather than the transfer station.
We'll move on to the, that is for the, your, your presentation, mayor?
That is, that is it.
So, we'll move on to the actual paper, paper number 11,607, light, turn the lights on. Thank you, Peter. Paper number 11,678, an order authorizing the treasure with the approval of the mayor to borrow the sum of $425,000 for the purchase of fleet vehicles for the public services and building and inspection services under the provision of MGL Chapter 44, Section 7. We need a motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
So moved.
Counselor Hopkins?
Harper.
Did I hear one over here? We need a second?
Uh...
Well, we need the motion to get into the, oh, I see, in case we want to refer it to committee.
Be a motion.
All right, so...
Could be a motion to refer as the initial motion.
They need a motion to put it on the floor.
Well, we need a motion to put it on the floor.
I was gonna add that.
So, currently, there is not a second, but if, again, if the council prefers to, a motion to post, to refer to a committee, I'm thinking public services, since this is mostly public services, then that should be the motion.
So moved.
So, we have a motion to refer to public services. Do we have a second?
Second.
Sec, all right. Any discussion at this point? Mayor, you'll probably be, oh, yes, Counselor Buddington, go ahead.
I would have been happy to approve this tonight, but I, I'll, that's largely because of my confidence in Mr. LaScarbo, because I know he's really been on top of equipment issues for a long time. But I do agree that the council should get a lot of information before committing to these things. The, the one question I have, if I may, through the chair to whoever wants it, is, is there a long-term plan for future replacements? You said that we're planning to pay this off over four years. Does that imply that we're planning for the useful life of these to be four years? Or, basically, what's, what's the, what are the future steps you have?
So, the, the future steps, the useful life is, these would, we would anticipate these taking, taking a life of, of eight or nine years of operation before they get rolled into that, you know, that, that surplus or, or low, low-impact use. And that, that we would then be, you know, this would become a renewable approach over, over time to continue to renew the fleet. But the, the first step is to, is to establish the, is to establish the schedule and put some, put some discipline against it.
Yes. Any other counselors? Again, the motion is to refer this to public service, so, you know, excuse me?
When's it coming?
Well, Counselor Moran is not here tonight, and he is the chairperson of public service, I believe, so we may not, we can set a date. I'm guessing you guys want sooner than later. I'm not sure how long Counselor Moran is away. I know he's on vacation. What's that?
It's not very long, I believe. I would say so.
Did you want to speak?
Yes, I, I would. I just, just so everybody knows, the, we were looking at a specific branded truck, could not order them until November, which we wouldn't get delivery till January, then the trucks have to be set up, so we wouldn't see them till April or May.
Mm-hmm.
So, right now, I don't know how we're going to get through this winter. You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to force the issue. I'm more happy to go to, to, to committee with it and explain everything. I'd like to get everybody down there just to look at these. I wouldn't have to say a word. I really, I mean, some of you, some of you have seen them, okay? So, we went with the other Ford, the first ones were Ram. They were actually cheaper in price, but I would be getting them, if I ordered them tomorrow, I still have a little time, because they don't really, they don't place their order till July 15th, so I have a few weeks and to get it into the queue for, to build. When it's on a state contract, they can't go around and buy, this dealer, you know, like, when you buy a car at a dealer, you can have the dealer go to this dealer and get it. We can't do that on a state contract. It specifies new inventory or ordered. Existing inventory have to be ordered. So, right now, we're, if, if we go much beyond that, we won't have them for this winter. And with the breakdowns we had last year, I mean, the calls were coming in, you know, my street ain't been plowed, and that's the reason, the equipment's down more than it's up. We have more breakdowns during every storm now, so just, just to keep that in mind, that's all.
I would, Counselor, do you know when Counselor...
I believe he's gone for two weeks, and I don't know when that started.
Counselor Wilkinson.
I was, that, ask, sorry, if I could, on, we, Counselor Lamb and I answer at the exact same time. Who did you write down as to who seconded this motion?
Hopkins and Wilkinson.
Okay, I wish to withdraw my second.
We have a second, so we'll get there.
Pardon me?
Counselor Hopkins needs to withdraw his motion.
Oh, okay. Because I, I have to agree with the, the other counselor, that I could use a weak vote on this tonight, I have the same confidence in the, the people that set this up.
I did mention, I asked at the beginning about if there was a timeframe, and that one, when that was brought up, there wasn't, didn't seem like there was any pressure, but we're hearing something different now. So, counselors, who had hands up over here? Yes, Counselor Cohen.
I, too, would support Mr. LaScarbo today. I mean, for somebody who has a company that we service fleet vehicles and, you know, the maintenance on them and trying to keep them on the road and safe is, is definitely costly, and I trust his opinion. We had some issues in the last winter.
Counselor Lamb? I am on the same page, like, I, I generally am in support of this. I feel like it's an opportunity for us to learn more about the long-term plan of, of the mayor, so I feel like there's still maybe an opportunity here for committee meetings for more of a conversation in that respect. I am, you know, for approving this, I, again, and I don't mean to be the squeaky wheel with this one, with the Fiesta in particular, if that's one where we can think a little bit more about that being considered for a hybrid or alternative of that type, I don't know if that one is as urgent in terms of replacement compared to the ones that move snow, but I just wanted to voice that.
Counselor Harpen.
Um, yeah, I mean, I agree. I, I trust Mr. LaScarbo and, and what his needs are, and, you know, I live on Ashland Street, so I see the trucks going by quite often, and I see what condition that they're in, so there's no doubt that we need, you know, some vehicles. My only thing is, and I know this is a new administration, but as, I hope you understand our point of view when we say that we want to bring it to committee, because, one, we're new counselors, so we don't really have the knowledge as of some of the older counselors that are here. So, we really kind of want to look into things a little bit deeper and understand what we're spending things on. It's not a matter of trust or integrity or anything, it's prob, it's just a, a matter of knowledge. So, you know, I, I will support this tonight, but I would like to get some more information on it.
Well, before you say support, so what is currently on the floor is, is the motion to refer it to public services. Counselor Hopkins, I think I know what's coming.
I'll save us some time and withdraw the motion.
So, we, still, currently, we have no motion on the floor. Counselor Buddington?
I'll move to adopt the order.
Second.
And we get Counselor Cohen as second.
We're not adopting it.
Uh, we're not adopting?
No, you gotta pass it to a second.
Yeah, we, we, motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
So moved.
Okay. And then, Counselor Cohen, same? Okay, thank you. Any other discussion before I pass it to the public? Oh, Counselor LaForest.
I, I'm clearly in the minority on this one, but I'm just going to caution against voting on things that are coming up. I realize this was in the packet, and we've had this, and we've had the opportunity to ask convers, ask questions of Mr. LaScarbo and his department and the mayor's office. But the committees have a function, and I, I feel like we're shortchanging our responsibility as a council by, by voting on these items, these large-budget items without further discussion in committee. And is it necessary, which are the vehicles, just a question, which are the vehicles that are part of the state contract?
They're all state.
All of, all of these vehicles are part of the state contract. And may I ask one more question? When did we know this had to be submitted to be part of the state contract?
Whenever you submit them, they're part of the state contract.
No, I understand, but, but we're being asked to vote on it right away.
Well, I, I have a suggestion. It was whispered in my ear.
Okay.
So, a little birdie, that we can pass this to a second reading and refer it to committee at the same time.
Well, I think there are further questions about, you know, as was indicated, the rotation, you know, moving forward in the mayor's plan for, you know, future vehicle purchases, so, you know, I will make that motion.
So, well, the motion, first motion has to be withdrawn, which would be Counselor Buddington.
May I withdraw my motion and, and submit an amended motion?
Go ahead.
To pass this to a second reading and publish as required by law, and also refer to the Public Services Committee.
That's a great motion.
Thank you. Second that.
I've been working on that.
Any other discussion from the counselors? I, I actually like that motion. I would have probably joined you, Counselor LaForest, in the minority there. Nothing against Mr. LaScarbo. Tim, you know, I've supported a lot of your stuff. I've seen your veh, your, your buildings that were collapsing. I've seen the vehicles that are collapsing, but I have always sort of had a philosophy of when things, especially this big, come in at the last minute, we have not had a chance. This is something that's not, that is somewhat rare to the council, so this is not something that I've seen often before. So, I think it's worth, this would have been, should have, in my opinion, just been referred, set up as a public service committee and given the presentation or that, so that would have, what would have worked good when we've done other things for public services. At this point, we have the motion. I'm going to ask any discussion from the public. We have, go ahead, you're right there. Mr. Sapienza.
Brian Sapienza, 113 Pleasant Street. I just want to ask if, and this may be to the mayor or Mr. LaScarbo, are these vehicles being locally sourced, especially the light and medium-duty vehicles? Or do they have to go through a specific vendor or contractor because it's a state contract? That's my question. Thank you.
Would you like us to answer?
If you want to answer.
Here.
Yeah, this is now open... Yeah, this is not open forum, so you, you're willing to.
It's through a state, the state contract, there are vendors on the list that you can use. There used to be like four or five, now there's like 35 on there, but they're not necessarily local.
Mr. Smith, I believe you were next.
I'll be very brief, it's getting later, but, Mr. Lamb was, Counsel Lamb was around at the time that the Paris Accord issue was brought up. I think he was the one who spearheaded it. He knows that I was vocal to the council that was around at the time, that my concern with it was that it's a, it's a great thing to, to sign on to, but I was worried that there wasn't any framework put around this, and how are you going to get to the place where you're actually doing the things you were saying that you were going to do or you were looking to do? And it feels to me, obviously, that we still aren't, aren't there. And I'm, just wanted to voice that it takes work to get there, and I'm concerned with, you know, you have only two years cycles here with the mayor and the council, and unless you actually put in the work to make it so that somebody talks to Mr. LaScarbo over time and makes him aware of what your goals are, so that he can actually be thinking about it while he's at his desk, and he can communicate back to you reasons why maybe he can't fulfill it or reasons he can, I just really wish that kind of conversation would start, because otherwise, you're just going to be back where I predicted you'd be, which was here, which was when it first brought up, that, you know, you're going to be in a place where you're still not doing those things that you're making the lofty goals for. So, I just hope that somebody walking away from this meeting thinks about the, how you can address that going forward, not holding up what he needs now so much as looking to make it so it's better in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Lyons, name and address again.
Rob Lyons, 17 Gunther Street. Again, addressing you with the Paris Accord and trying to become more green, I noticed four F-550s. As somebody who used to plow and in construction, the difference between an F-550 and an F-350 is towing capacity. That is all. There's not much more difference in that, besides the $30,000 sticker price that's added on to it. Why are we buying F-550s when we can buy F-350s at a better gas mileage? And that's $120,000? I think that'd be $20,000 liability insurance on the shooting range around 20 years or so? So, I, I'm just wondering why we would, again, with the Paris, go after something we don't really need that's, that's more of a status than an actual utility vehicle that is used all the time. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the public? This is a roll call vote. Again, the motion currently is we're passing this to a second reading, and we are.
Referring.
Referring it to public services. Thank you. Roll call.
Buddington?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
LaForest?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Paper number 11,679, Mayor's Communication Number 44 regarding FY 2019 Parkland Acquisition and Renovation for Communities Park Program Proposal. Without objection, I will file the communication, and mayor.
Thank you. This is introducing a, a resolution to participate in the program. Over the past few, few years, the city's received $800,000 through this program, which is overseen through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. We received $400,000 in fiscal year 2016, and that supported the design and construction of the skate park at Knoll Field, and $400,000 in FY 18 to support the design and construction of the Spray Park and the related Knoll Field improvements. For FY 19, we looked at opportunities throughout the community and decided to focus our attention on the recreation facility on Brayton Hill Terrace, so that's the, the park between Brayton School, or below Brayton School on the way up to the Brayton Hill Residence Complex. We're looking at a proposal of $455,000, which has been reviewed by Parks and Rec, and it includes basketball court restoration, baseball field restoration and realignment, installation of a multi-use field and multi-use path, walking path around the perimeter of the park, some shade structure, a small parking lot, and tables, benches, signage, and other landscaping and amenities. What we're proposing is to request $318,503 from the park program with the balance of funds, that's $136,501, coming from our Community Development Block Grant Program. So, Larissa Bernstein is here from the Office of Community Development, and she can answer any questions that you have with regard to this proposal and the, and the resolution accompanying it.
Paper number 11,679, a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for the park grant for improvements to Brayton Hill located at Brayton Hill Terrace. We need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Discussion from council. Counsel Lamb, Counsel Buddington.
My question is more so around the amount of CDG, BG funds. That $136,501, what percentage of our total CDBG is it for the, the year?
So, it's, we get eight and a quarter, so that's, yeah.
Like a six.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Counsel Buddington?
I think this, I like the idea of improving the Brayton Hill Terrace area. They could use it. And I'm curious, what, was this a decision, a plan made up by the Community Development Office, or was there a city board or commission involved in this as well?
So, it, it went to Parks and Rec, and there was a public, a public meeting held around the proposal.
Okay, thank you.
I, oh, go ahead, is anyone up here? I, I have a question specifically, the Brayton Hill, that, that particular area is unique because I think a lot of people think it's part of the school, so that it's a playground or park that is connected to the school. And, I mean, it is fair, I do think the school uses it for some of its vents, but then at the same time, some people think it's just part of the Brayton Hill housing complexes, which is not publicly owned, it's not owned by the city unlike some of the other housing projects. So, I guess the question is, do we know, has there ever been a study to say, like, who uses that besides the school in Brayton? Is it sort of a West End or Central? I just didn't know, like, who besides Brayton Hill Terrace and the school benefits from that playground?
I think, I think those neighborhoods.
And YMCA.
Hmm?
And YMCA.
And YMCA. I would, I would say I know that at times, different, different youth leagues have used that as a, as a practice field, not as a, as a play facility, but I do believe that they have used that as a, as a practice field for, for softball as well. I know that the, again, this is an extension of the 21st Century Summer Program. They do the Kids vs. Cops Kickball Program there in the summer. And then again, some, some of it is also improvement, improvement in area we haven't, we haven't focused as much on in anticipation of driving use.
So, Counsel LaForest?
So, not specifically related to the, the grant, I'm straying a little bit, but there, there is a situation with safety crossing from Brayton up to the school. There's a stop line, a stop sign there in the road. If you take that left onto Brickyard Terrace and you go up the little hill, it sort of comes out of nowhere, and the kids jump out of the, the woods to cross over to go up to the, the school. So, I, I guess I'm wondering if the walking path and landscaping is going to address that area, or perhaps it's not a widely known issue.
So, I'm sorry, are you talking about as you're, as you're coming past the traffic light and heading up to, up to Brayton to go to the school, or if you're going the entrance that, that is the Y entrance? I'm trying, I'm trying to visualize.
On the Y side, so if you take, if you're driving up towards Brickyard.
Yeah, okay.
The apartment complex and take a left onto Brickyard Terrace, the kids from the apartment complex, I've been told, and I saw the stop sign, take a little shortcut from the apartment complex. We put up a stop sign there to alert people that kids would be jumping out of the woods right onto the road, there's no sidewalk. And then they go over and they climb up the embankment. So, my question is, will the grant, you know, address this safety issue of the kids accessing both the playground and the school?
We hadn't looked at, at that area specifically. We are, we are looking at, you know, some improvements to that, that existing playground. I think landscaping would, would help with that. We are, we are considering a small, a small parking structure there, so it would, it would have a calming effect. It would then also, you know, I can, I can appreciate that kids walking through parking may not be the, the solution, the optimal solution to that, other than we know that they're walking through parking if they're accessing the school in the Y anyway, and it may, it may have a calming effect on that area.
Any other discussion from councilors? Discussing, discussion from the public. This is a, we have a motion to adopt, a roll call vote.
Buddington?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
LaForest?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Paper number 11,680, Mayor's Communication Number 45, accepting the gift of $5,000 from the North Adams Steeplecats to the North Adams Public Library. Without objection, file the communication. Mayor.
Okay. This, this is fairly straightforward. The North Adams Steeplecats have awarded in response to a proposal from the library a $5,000 grant to support a collaborative summer literacy program between the team and the library. The program is known as the Cub Club, and it emphasizes youth participation in both baseball and summer reading. Is a very nice gift from the, from the Steeplecats, but I really want to acknowledge Library Director Mindy Hackner, who's been incredibly patient sitting through, through the meeting, as well as, as her staff, who developed the proposal and are going to oversee the, the implementation of the program this summer. I would invite her to respond to any questions you have at the, the appropriate time. But the, but the program really focuses on activities at the library. It focuses on mentoring. It focuses on, you know, a youth literacy night at Joe Woolfield prior to a Steeplecats game, you know, storytimes at the, at the, the new baseball museum on Main Street, and then other, other activities within the, within the library and the, and the community. So, a worthy program, and if you have any questions, I can turn it over.
Did you want to say anything?
No, I, I do want to say.
Just name and, name and address.
I'm sorry. I'm Mindy Hackner, Library Director, 74 Church Street. This is a very generous offer, and I think the Steeplecats would have been here tonight except they're away, they're at an away game. But I do want to especially acknowledge my Youth Services Director for creating this joint literacy program. In addition to the regular program that she's running, this grant will allow her, has allowed her to hire a woman to work with her, Duffy Judge, and they've planned an incredible thing for the summer, so.
Okay.
Can I address the council on one more thing?
It has to be specific to this agenda item.
It does.
Otherwise, you can speak at the end.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
We have a motion to, unless there's any other discussion, we have a motion to adopt. So, it's a roll call vote.
Did we have a motion?
Oh, wait, sorry, I jumped a paper ahead.
I'll motion to adopt.
I'll second it.
Paper number 11,680, in order, accepting a gift of $5,000 from the North Adams Steeplecats to the North Adams Public Library. We need a motion to adopt.
To adopt.
Second.
Lost my thumbs up from Lamb at the end of the meeting. Do we have any other discussion? And we have a roll call vote.
Buddington?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
LaForest?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Motion carries. We're seeing the light here, people. Do we have any committee reports? Yes, Counsel Buddington.
I'm, I'm not going to give a long report. I'm just going to say that General Government Committee has had a bunch of meetings on the plastic bag issue. I believe all, the whole council has got those by email. It's all been filed with the clerk's office, if anybody in the public would like copies of it.
Any other committee reports? We have community calendar and events. Do you have anything? Was it an event or community calendar for the library you wanted to speak? If, if it's an event.
I, I just wanted to make the councilors aware of a Citizens Action Committee that was formed as part of the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition, and this past weekend they had an event at the library called Love Your Library, and they raised $500 for the library and also gave us a power washer to maintain the memorial bricks. So, I'd like to have the councilors thank the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition at one point for their civic engagement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And yes, Counsel Lamb.
I just want to mention the newly forming North County Men's Group had a meeting this afternoon, and we have set our next meeting for Tuesday, June 20, or July 24th, if anybody else would care to start joining that group.
Any other events? Open forum, would anyone like to speak in open forum? No? Yes? I figure that's why you're waiting around.
I just wanted to mention a few items that I'd love to.
Name, name and address.
Joe Smith, Joseph Smith, 131 Horgan Road, Clarksburg. Just a few items that have been in the news in the past, but I haven't really heard any updates, but I'd love to, at some point, hear some updates on, or where the bike path near the airport is going. Notre Dame, what we're doing as far as trying to sell that. If the, I'm not sure if the current administration is looking for the, still for donation of some of the land from where St. Francis was, as the previous administration was. If they are, I'm just curious where that is. I'm wondering what's going on with the pound of land that we had that we put up, that nobody had an interest in. And the other thing I wanted to mention was that I'm very happy about seeing that pedestrian, the thing off of the, the park on Eagle Street, and the little addition to the pocket park, and I hope that at some point we start talking about the possibility, I know it's come up many times over the decades, but making it a pedestrian-only way, I think, at some point would really help the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Brian Sapienza, 113 Pleasant Street. A couple of quick items on the regards to the park grants and stuff, the improvement of the parks, not just benefits to people in those neighborhoods, but people throughout the city that take their kids down to the parks and let them use the various parks throughout the city. Second item is disappointed that the state process of obtaining vehicles, especially light and medium duty vehicles, does not permit the city or town to consider local vendors for source of vehicles in certain cases, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for open forum? Mayor's concerns.
Thank you. Just a couple of, a couple of items. First of all, I want to just thank the committee for their forbearance through a fairly long and occasionally torturous process. The question came up a couple times about why things were brought forward to council and not to committee, and I'm going to use my least favorite phrase with, with some apology, which is that has been past practice, but I am, I'm happy to work with you to bring those things forward through the, through the committee structure and process. I, it's a point well taken that that does provide for a longer and a better vetting and airing of some of these, of some of these issues. So, I want to acknowledge that first and foremost. I would just call to your attention a few items of interest. Last week, last Tuesday afternoon, we did have an ethics training seminar in the, in the city for public, of public officials. It was presented by David Giannotti from the Attorney General's Office. I personally found it a good refresher, and if anyone would like copies of those slides, we can provide those to you. I want to acknowledge McCann, which received a $195,873 Workforce Skills Grant last week. It was presented at a ceremony in Salem from the, by the governor, and those funds will support engineering workstations, a 3D printer, and a robotics manufacturing center at the school. And I just really want to credit Superintendent Brosnan and his team for their, for their great work securing that. I was going to also mention the library cleanup day, and I want to thank Director Hackner for, for bringing that up, for the folks at the coalition who organized that, and then to the library staff and volunteers who, who participated. It was, I really think, a great show of support for the library. Another great show of support, the UNO Center had an end of school year party yesterday, and it was really well attended by the I was going to also mention the library cleanup day and I want to thank Director Hackner for, for bringing that up, for the folks of the coalition who organized that, and then to the library staff and volunteers who, who participated. It was, I really think, a great show of support for the library. Another great show of support, the UNO Center had an end of school year party yesterday and it was really well attended by the students and it's really exciting to see how that outdoor landscaping work is moving forward. And we expect a mid to late summer opening. I think I saw Shirley Davis on Main Street and I believe she said it was around August 17th that they're hoping to, you know, do the ribbon cutting and open those amenities officially. The Windsor Lake Concert Series continues Wednesdays at 6:30. Born for Blues this week. As noted, the Steeplecats season is underway. We talked about the Cub Club. We should also again talk about the celebration of baseball. The exhibit there, if you haven't had a chance to see it, I believe it's open Wednesday through Sundays, is truly, is truly incredible. It's inspiring. It's a, it's a great piece of work. Downstreet Art kicks off on Thursday, a kind of unofficial start to, to summer and the city has packed in a tremendous number of activities. The LaFesta Baseball Exchange is having their annual spaghetti dinner. Spaghetti ziti? One or the other. At St. Elizabeth from four to seven, there's a downtown bike around. The Downstreet Art activities will be throughout the city. You may have seen some of those starting to be installed. And then the movie in Colgrove Park is Wizard of Oz as part of, as part of what is a fairly robust evening. I want to just speak to two points that were brought up over the course of the meeting. One, I do, I do think the, the point with regard to how we, how we live our commitment to green communities is, is a point well taken and the, the idea that we need to not just have a, a resolution, but, but greater structure is something that I do, I do take as a serious, a serious piece of work for going forward. And I know that they, they didn't, they didn't survive the marathon, but I just, I want to echo my, or indicate my strong support for the Reefs Across America program. It's an absolutely fantastic program and I have a, you know, a personal investment in it, but I really appreciate that it's coming to the community. And then finally, I want to, I want to end where President Bona began the meeting by just acknowledging the passing of Mr. Shalafu, who was a fixture in the, in these meetings in the community and who cared deeply and passionately and expressed that robustly.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Great adjective. Let's see, we have liaison updates and councilors' concerns. It's Councilor Cohen.
I just wrote, just to keep my, with the time that we're at, I wrote a few things down. With the recent increases in the prices of gas, we cannot blindly allow for the prices to be a hardship on our community without voicing our concerns. This problem will not only affect small businesses that have operational costs, but it will also affect the citizens of this city as well as affect the public services, police and the city budget. Lack of transportation infrastructure and the prices of gas are making an already low-income population struggle even more to continue to work and to live. The prices of gas in North Adams have fluctuated by one to two percent in the last 24 hours. I'm fully confident that Cumberland Farms is finding opportunity to gouge the people in this city. They seem to be setting the benchmark for prices and because they make up 75% of our market in the city, they have the ability to be unreasonably high. The surrounding areas of Northern Berkshire are vulnerable to these prices, so I ask with concern that the city council and the mayor's office in North Adams raise concern and work with our local and state leaders to create transparency so that, that this does not go unnoticed.
Got it?
That's it.
Okay. Any other councilors? I just would like to remind councilors and the mayor that papers need to be in to the clerk on Tuesday, July 3rd due to the holiday. And if you're not sure what the holiday is, it's the next day. Licenses. We do have a license from RJ Taxi for Edward Lacoste, 125 Brayton Hill Terrace, North Adams. We need a motion to grant the license.
Motion to grant? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. License approved. And we have one correspondence. Which one was it?